Richards. Rosales.
Here.
Schrader. Schwartz. Alex. Berksen. Carter. Coort. Esri. Harper. Hartke. James. Kurtz.
Here. Thank you. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes. Well, I've got Mr. Carter first and Mr. Rosales is the second, the lone second. Any changes to the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Approval of the agenda and addendum? So move. Mr. James, second. Mr. Mitchell. Got his hand up there, sorry. Any changes to the agenda? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public participation. As you know, we have some ground rules for public participation. Those that participate will have five minutes to make their statement, and we will go no longer than one hour for total public participation. First up, Mr. Jim Creighton, please step forward, hit the button on the center of the microphone. Name and address, sir.
Good evening. Jim Creighton, 507 North Russell in Champaign. I am the spokesman for the West Washington Watershed Steering Committee, and I represent the people of the central west portion of the city of Champaign, which is a two-square-mile area, 1,266 acres, which are under the jurisdiction of the Fountainhead Drainage District. This massive area drains into a three-foot drainage tile that begins two and a half miles from the copper slough and two houses from mine. The pipe is woefully undersized, penetrated by large tree roots, and the pipe is egging the beginning stages of collapse. The current commissioners of the Fountainhead Drainage District are aware of these issues, and not a single effort has been made to remedy any of them. Remedy equates to a special assessment. The city, on the other hand, is in the process of spending $15 million to remedy as much of this problem as they can, except they need the pipe. The flooding is a twofold process. Massive street flooding makes the streets impassable to all vehicles, including emergency vehicles. Flooded basements flood from trickles to three to eight feet of water when we have these main rains. These floods destroy personal property, they erode the foundations of our homes, and they, most importantly, they weaken the human spirit with multiple floods. We are asking you this evening to reject the chairman's appointment of Mark Shaw and instead appoint John Huston. Appointing an urban commissioner will still maintain the balance of power with the rural commissioners' interests, but will ensure that there is a voice at the table for the concerns and the needs and desires of urban citizenry. Why is this important or even necessary? Would it surprise you to know that 25% of the Fountainhead's physical area is made up, it lies within the city of Champaign? Would it surprise you that 70% of the entire tax levy is paid for by the citizens of Champaign? You have a responsibility to the citizens of all the county, boundaries, not just rural interests. We aren't asking you to get involved in the middle of this battle with the Fountainhead, but since you have a responsibility of appointment, you can at least aid in the leveling of the playing field. We asked, we are asking you to recognize, we are not underserved, we are ignored. Please appoint John Huston. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huston?
Good evening. I'm John Huston that Mr. Creighton just spoke of. I reside at 509 and North Draper in Champaign, and I come before you today to put my application in for the Fountainhead Drainage District Commissioner vacancy that is open. How did I get to this spot today? Well, it first started with my basement. As Jim said, I also have experienced flooding. It also has sapped me both physically and spiritually. Continually, I have to deal with flooded basements. I have to make plans around when I go to vacations or even leave town for a short period. So, when I go out my front door, I can see five or six neighbors that are also experiencing the very same situation. And then, I go down the block and I see more neighborhoods experiencing the very same situation. And I did a little investigating. I went to a Fountainhead Drainage District meeting about six years ago, just to see what it was about, and they were nice enough to take my concern. The gist of the conversation was, okay, it's a city problem, and I was sent on my way. Well, from there, I did a little more investigating, both in parallel with the West Washington Street Watershed effort and city efforts. Since then, I've learned quite a bit more. I live only 50 feet or so from that 36-inch tile that Mr. Creighton just spoke of. That's for starters. I've also been actively pursuing, this is not the first time I've been in front of you asking for this commission, I believe it was two years ago I also asked. So, I do want to just go over that, the, it's important to have urban representation on this traditionally rural commission. The, there may be a fear that I am going to be solely with the city on various issues. That is not necessarily true. I, just one generation, my grandfather, he was a farmer in Mohammed area. I have a great appreciation for farming. I have several friends who have been in farming. I've helped drive the corn to the elevator, baled hay, enjoyed the fresh air of the country. I wouldn't do anything to jeopardize the land or the water quality that is so important to our county. The quality of our farmland is very important to our county. In the same sense, the quality of life in our city is also important. Reality is, we have a overlap in the Fountainhead Drainage District. It's not likely to go in reverse. That 25% landmass is likely to increase. I'm only asking that. Simply, we're giving one spot on the Fountainhead Drainage District, one out of three, and a qualified person has come forward, myself, to fill that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huston. David Wilson?
Can I press this middle button? Oh, it's on. Great, okay. Thank you for hearing me. I come before you as a concerned citizen. I know the county board, you, have lots of funding decisions that are on the docket in the very near future. For example, the possibility of funding a new jail construction, or using that, that money, those resources, for something else, and also how to use federal funds and some other things. But I want to make a case for you to consider, and that is, I think it's important to let you know that we, as a community, should consider shoring up our really eroded social safety net in Champaign County. The social safety net, by a lot of people's observations now, has dramatically withered. Let me give you three brief illustrations. I'm currently doing work in Chicago, and we're extending the work down here in Champaign-Urbana, and we're actually talking, doing ethnography, it's called, of heroin addicts. And the heroin addicts that we talk to routinely tell us that they have no resources at their disposal. And in fact, what they tell us repetitiously is that they would rather go to prison, where they can get three square meals a day, and where they can get shelter, than being on the streets. There's very little opportunity, very little provision of resources for them. The homeless shelters, which are now transitional facilities in Champaign-Urbana, are really quite crowded. They're hopelessly overcrowded. Furthermore, a very vital resource to Champaign-Urbana historically, something called first call for help, which has helped connect indigent people, people in need, with resources, is now being proposed, possibly, for closure. And the dilemma is lack of funds. So, there's lack of funds, unable to hire people to staff a telephone line. So, what I want to put before you is the notion that everyone in Champaign-Urbana is your constituency, and there's a lot of needy people out there that could really use your support, and I think they need to be considered when you make funding decisions. Thank you.
Here we go, one more time. Nilu Far Shabiyate.
Good evening. Again, thank you very much for giving me this time. My name is Nilu Far Shabiyate. I live at 2609 Cherry Hills Drive in Champaign. I would like to take this opportunity once again to voice my support for an overhaul of our county's criminal justice system. Previously, I had used police reports to emphasize our community's need to address this issue. Here, I want to focus on some specifics of how a comprehensive and proactive program can improve our community's overall well-being. Building a new jail would repeat the mistakes of the past. It would only be a matter of few years to have it filled with additional people, most of whom are minorities from socio-economically disadvantaged families. Investing in alternative programs instead gives an otherwise unavailable chance to RSDs to address their problems with the support from their own community. These programs include mental health and substance abuse treatment centers, crisis assessment and intervention resources, and proactive initiatives, offering vocational training and cultural centers to provide safe and enriching environments for families to socialize, improve their life skills, and support one another. As the statistics show, offering social services through communities has many advantages to locking people up. First, they tend to be much less expensive in the long run. Long run is important to keep in mind. Second, they improve the lives of the individuals and their families, especially their children. Third, they can help break the vicious cycle of violence and poverty, which in turn will make our communities safer. As a result of these undisputable benefits, the national trend, even in the most conservative states such as Texas, has been to move away from building new cell stores, implementing systematic diversion programs, and evidence-based risk assessment of the RSDs. Many of the counties which have successfully adopted this approach are similar in size and demographics to Champaign County. One example being Arora County in Michigan, many other examples. Just to cite one study, a recent report from Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration shows that participants in community-based programs achieved significant improvements in their lives. Rates of employment increased by 30%, school attendance by 10%, and even the ability to secure stable housing by 38%. It is undeniable that financial burdens on the board to provide vital services to our community is substantial, but it is also true that difficult times can push us to think creatively and come up with innovative approaches to our social and economic problems. In this respect, we should consider that the cost of the overhaul of our criminal justice system and providing vital services to both victims and perpetrators of crimes are not prohibitive. A lot can be done by educating ourselves and the rest of the community, and providing training to the police, the jail staff, and judiciary. Also available community services and facilities can be used more effectively and cost efficiently by working closely with our medical clinics and hospitals and volunteer groups to coordinate efforts, get rid of redundancies, and training their staff. In addition, recession is not the time for the government to cut social services expenditures and pay up debt because the only impact of this decision will be a shift of the financial burden from one sector to another. For example, cutting funds for mental health treatment or substance abuse increases the cost of emergency room services and fill our jails, both more costly than the presumed savings. These cuts also increase unemployment and all the other costs it entails. I'm sure we all want to live in a better and more compassionate community, not where people without resources are kept in jail and prisons, out of sight and out of mind. We need the county to work on creating a comprehensive program to treat behavioral problems, and within this program, provide treatment for people who commit crimes as a result of their perpetual problems, rather than the criminality of their characters. Thank you so much.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
That's it. We got it right this time. All right. Nice job. John Roska, please.
Good evening. My name's John Roska. I'm a staff attorney at Land and Lincoln Legal Assistance. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed law library fee increase, because it's my understanding that one of the main reasons for the requested increase is to support the self-representation help desk at the Champaign County Courthouse. And I just wanted to provide a little background and detail about what that is. I've spoken before, I think, a couple of years ago, and so forgive me for repeating myself. The Land of Lincoln developed the self-representation help desk in 2005, and it's been open since then in the, on the first floor of the courthouse. And in 2008, it was first funded and staffed by a full-time, paid staff member. The county provided funding from 2008 to 2011, but that was the last time that the self-representation desk actually got county funding. Since then, we've survived on some funding from United Way, which has basically been exhausted, and we've also gotten some private contributions, and the Champaign County Bar Association has also kicked in some contributions. But basically, we are running on fumes at this point. The proposed fee increase would provide the funding to restore the funding for the self-representation help desk through the county. The self-representation help desk has been open Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, from 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock on Mondays and Wednesdays, and from 9:00 to noon on Fridays. Just in the last month or so, because of a health problem with Bob Spencer, the retired lawyer who staffs it, it's back, we've cut it back to Monday, Wednes, Mondays and Wednesdays, 9:00 to noon. And I can tell you that from just cutting those hours back, I've heard from people saying, where are you? Why, how come you're not here on Fridays? We thought you were here on Fridays. And on the days that Bob is not there, because of the, because he was sick, we immediately get calls from people, how come there's nobody here? The clerk is calling us, why aren't you here? So, and I know from having filled in, in his absence, that there is a steady stream of people. When I've, when I've staffed it, there is no downtown from 9:00 to noon. You get 15, 20 people a day coming in, seeking the services of the self-representation help desk. What we do there is provide forms and information for people who are representing themselves in court cases, largely, almost exclusively in civil cases, things like divorces, small claims cases, post-judgment collection things, to help people so that they can handle the case on their own with, by filling out forms that we provide. What's different and unique really about the self-representation help desk in Champaign County is that it is staffed by a person, not just a computer, but it's a live person, and there are actual forms, custom-designed for Champaign County, specifically designed and contoured to the procedures in Champaign County. And like I said, there is a constant stream of people that are, that are served there every day, 15 to 20 people at least. I know nobody likes fee increases. I don't like fee increases, but if that's what it takes to keep it going, I hope that the county can provide that support so that it does stay open. Because without that support, we would simply have to pull the plug and it would close. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Kilgore?
Good evening. James Kilgore, 511 South Draper, Champaign. I mean, I've spoken here a lot of times, as you know, and one of the themes that I have sort of brought repeatedly is the fact that there's major changes going on in criminal justice across the country. And I think yesterday was a momentous day for, for change in criminal justice. First of all, we had the Attorney General Eric Holder, following the example of Republican Governor Rick Perry in Texas, declaring that the drug war has been a failure, and taking major steps to reduce sentencing, mandatory minimums, and basically saying that we have the wrong people in prison for the wrong things for far too long. So, I think this is, I think this is part of the environment that's happening everywhere, and it's part of the environment in which the county board, right now, has to look at, look at its way forward. And then, secondly, we had the declaration by a federal judge that the stop-and-frisk policy in New York was unconstitutional, which was a process which was declared to be racial profiling, and where hundreds of thousands of predominantly African-American Latino youth were being shaken down by police in the course of a year, and 90% of them were not really guilty of anything, weren't ever charged or arrested. So, now, that's created incredible enmity in New York, that, that whole procedure of stop-and-frisk. And certainly, we don't have anything like that in Champaign County, but we know that we do have our own kind of racial disparity problems in the jail, and hopefully, with the Racial Justice Task Force that's been proposed, we can address this and come up with some solutions before it gets, it becomes much more serious. So, in that light, I want to, I want to make sure that in the upcoming discussions and deliberations about the budget, as everyone is scrambling to get their items onto the agenda and so forth, that we keep in mind that the recommendations, particularly of the Community Justice Task Force, about allocating funds from the public safety sales tax, 30% to preventative programs, as opposed to simply allocating things for bond repayment on construction. And in particular, I think it's important that, to draw your attention to the 800,000-plus in utility bills that are, that are being paid out of the, for public safety buildings, but that are being paid out of the public safety sales tax, which are actually outside the parameters of what Ordinance 683 mandates, in terms of what those public safety sales tax funds are supposed to be used for. So, I hope you'll at least take a very careful look at that particular basket of funding, and make sure that it is used for something that's going to keep people out of jail, and that is also going to fall within the proper guidelines of what Ordinance 683 mandates in terms of using that public safety sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public participation? All right, now, close. Public participation. We'll move on to communications. I have one communique. On your desk, you should have the Champaign County Developmental Disabilities Board and Champaign County Mental Health Board. Public hearing for Champaign County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Programs, and speak to your local legislature about your needs. It's going to take place September 18th at the Champaign Public Library on West Green Street in Champaign at 4:45 PM. Are there any other communications? First, Mr. Maxwell, then Ms. Bucy.
I received a rather pleasant phone call this morning from Mr. Stanley Stephen O'Connor. He seems to be, his voice was strong, and he said he's had some good days now, and he is doing some rehab. He rides a little bit on his exercise cycle, and is also able to get out a bit and walk around. So, I felt it was a very positive phone call, and I wanted to share that with you folks this evening.
Well, that's great news. We all love Steve. Any other, there was, Ms. Bucy?
I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to you Barb Mann. She is the new chief of the Civil Division in the State's Attorney's Office and has recently joined us, and I think she's going to provide a little bit of an introduction of herself as well.
Sure. I am, I'm coming back to the State's Attorney's Office, having worked there as a prosecutor in, for most of the 90s, and after that, went to work at an Urbana firm called Weber &amp; Thies, and for the last 10 years or so, have been a partner in the firm of Nally, Bauer, and Finin in Mayan. So, I am looking forward, I'm sorry, I'm looking forward to meeting you all. I've enjoyed working, some with Deb and Al, and some of the other county departments, for the last month or so, since I've been here. And I'm glad to have this opportunity for Deb to introduce me and for me to say hello. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. We've already given you plenty of work to do. Starting off already. Is there any other communications? All right.
All right. Thank y'all for being here tonight. We have a long finance agenda, so I hope you all bear with me. The first item on the agenda is item A, annual fees review. I should say, ahead of time, we are not being asked to take action on any of these fee issues tonight. We're going to hear a discussion from department heads and elected officials, and Mr. Del Ashbit from Bellwether, who's been doing a study of these fees, and we're going to hear sort of what the, in the case of the law library fee, the courts automation fee, and the circuit clerk document storage fee, we're going to hear justification for increasing these fees. In the case of the Bellwether study, we're going to hear this, his findings, but it'll be up to the elected officials to work with the county administrator during the budget process to determine what they want to do and, and how we want to adjust the budget going forward. So, please, you know, listen and feel free to ask questions, but I want to make, make it clear, we're not being asked to take action on any of these tonight. So, let's start with the law library fee. Mr. Roger Holland is here, and he has distributed a memo that's in our packet. Roger, take it away.
Good evening. My name is Roger Holland. I'm the court administrator in Champaign County. Distributed to all of you is a memo, which I won't go through in any great detail, but it's a pretty straightforward discussion of the law library fee. It's been set at $10 since 2003. We use that fee for a number, variety of purposes, primarily for the maintenance and upkeep of the law library. The Champaign County Law Library provides both print and online legal research for not only the public, but also various departments throughout the county. The law library fee has, from time to time, as the memo indicates, provided support for the self-help, self-representation help desk on the first floor of the courthouse. You heard Mr. Roska discuss that particular program. It's something that's provided a great deal of support for those who are coming into the justice system, who may not be familiar with the justice system, and who require some assistance in navigating the justice system. The most concerning thing to me about the law library fund is, if you can, if you look at the materials provided, is the fund balance. It's dropped by 2/3 from its highest point, and is now around $50,000. This is due to a number of factors, primarily because the law library revenues have been down, civil filings have been down. The law library is The Law Library is funded by a ten-dollar fee on civil filings only. So, the Law Library, that's how the Law Library gets its funding. The Law Library has one part-time employee, and there's no intention of increasing the number of employees in any, in the future. But the fund balance has been dwindling primarily because, again, of declining civil revenues and in addition, also due to the taking on of more responsibilities by the Law Library and increasing costs. Not only are print materials more expensive, although print is becoming more, less and less of a focus for the Law Library as computers and computer-assisted legal research have become more prevalent, but also the cost of the online services increases between three and five percent every year, and it's thousands of dollars to keep that up. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, but tonight, as part of our proposal, we're requesting a seven-dollar increase. For every dollar of increase, we estimate somewhere between five and six thousand dollars of revenue, and as Mr. Roska indicated, some of that revenue would be devoted to helping provide some support for the self-help, self-representation help desk. I can never get that straight.
Okay, one interesting question. Mr. Kurtz has been jumping out of his seat wanting to speak on this issue, so I'll let him go first.
Roger and I have been around and round on this self-help desk for many, many years, going back almost four years since I started on the board. I am a strong supporter of the self-help desk for a number of reasons. One, the, it takes pressure off of the Circuit Clerk's office, takes pressure off the judges in the courtroom. When someone comes in and hasn't got the right paperwork, has happened in my case twice. When I came to the court many, many years ago, I didn't really know how to process through the justice system. I had a civil case that I wanted to adjudicate, and it took me two visits to a courtroom and then finally got the proper paperwork. The self-help desk is unique in the way it does not, does not give out law information. What it does is help someone work through the process, get the proper paperwork, so that it takes pressure off of the Circuit Clerk's office, where they would be lining up if there wasn't the self-help desk, and when they get into the courtroom, wasting the time of the judges in that area. So, I would hope that the county board would support this Law Library Fee increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Ms. Petrie, I saw your hand up next, and if other people want to speak, let me know.
Okay.
I saw you, Rachel.
Thank you very much. I just ran the inflation calculator, and the amount of ten dollars now is worth twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay.
And you want it to go to seventeen. So, I have a couple of issues, actually quite a few issues.
Okay.
First of all, the people who come to this desk are in that subpopulation of probably low income, so we're hitting them hard. Second, it is very important, so then, how can we figure out how to keep it without punishing them by increasing this more than the inflation calculator? And we have other people here who are in the judiciary system and lawyers in the community. I'm a little saddened to learn during public participation that the local bar has not stepped up stronger to help this, because as Mr. Kurtz just indicated, it helps the lawyers to have this desk there as a first stop. So, hoping that this message will get out, that at least one county board member is a little disappointed in the local bar and that they are not stepping up to the plate on this. This might be heard. And I would like to hear from those who would like to see this continue, other ways of funding this other than hitting these people in the pocketbook beyond the inflation calculator. Thank you.
Mr. Holland?
The only comment I would have to that is that, again, because this fee applies to civil filings, individuals can and often do request fee waivers of all of the fees, of all of the fees, including this fee, and then pay zero.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Okay, no problem.
And I'm sorry, if I can jump in, I want to make it clear, this fee is not charged to people who use the help desk. This fee is charged to
Correct.
Everyone who files a motion in a civil case.
Correct. Every, the first pleading on civil filings, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Schwartz, I think you're next.
I'm absolutely supportive of the fee. I would just request that, since we're going to consider that in September, if you can provide a table similar to the other fee that shows revenues and expenses, just so that it kind of shows what the balance projected would be.
Absolutely. Provide whatever information you need, I'll be happy to provide.
Thank you. Mr. James?
Last time this came around, I know that there was a request from the county to help support it because it was going down. Mr. Roska, who spoke earlier, I think he does a wonderful job for the community. I read his column and use it to my benefit as much as I can, so I give some cadews there, and I know that anything he's going to be involved in is going to be upfront and fair. So, my thought is, now after hearing some of the discussion, I guess I could be in favor of supporting it, based on the fact that, excuse me, everybody that files will pay that. I don't like fees, never have liked fees, but again, like you said before, the fees have been dwindling, so the case may be that even if we raise it, it still may need some other source of income, and as Patsy said, she's disappointed in the local bar, while I have been for years, and I hope we're talking about the same bar.
I'll try not to take that personally.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Carter?
My concern is, you know, I know everybody need money, but the people that use these services are mostly the working-class people. Now, what is our minimum wage right now?
Twenty-five cents.
Huh? And the spending, I can't understand what's going on here. We can't get, you, how, is, the people are suffering, the food is going up, every time you turn around, they jacking it up. Everything, the working-class people is going up, but the wages. And this bothers me.
Mr. Carter, I'm inclined to agree with you, but I'm having trouble tying this into the Law Library Fee.
Huh?
If you can, I'm having trouble relating what you're saying to the Law Library Fee, if you can try to stay on topic.
Well, I think, are those people the ones that have to pay these fees? They go in for service? Huh?
Said anybody who goes to court has to pay this, or anybody who goes to court on a civil case has to pay this fee.
Well, who are those people?
Anybody who sues, anybody who sues everybody or gets sued.
That's correct.
Chris, that's what I'm saying, man, the poor people, look, I understand they need money, but the people that have to go and run to the service is have to pay for them. It's like me, I done got senior citizens, and even, even they done, they downsized the pizzas, I love pizzas. They downsized the peoples and raised the prices on everything. And what I'm saying is, we got to do something about the working-class folk.
All right.
Because it's just getting terrible.
I think this is good, the long, that's potentially a very long discussion. Mr., does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Holland regarding the Law Library Fee? Mr. Richards?
I do, Mr. Holland. You said part of the reason the fund balance is going down is the self-help desk and that will partially help to fund it. What are some of the other reasons that the balance has been going down the last couple of years? Again, the Law Library has taken on some responsibilities with regard to providing both print and online research for the public defender's office, which would normally be a general corporate fund expenditure, but again, the courts have always been cooperative partners with the county, and so we try to do what we can to, whenever we can, within the statutory framework, provide assistance in that area. So, those costs have continued to rise. Again, the fee was last set in two thousand and three, so there's been no adjustment for any expenditures, any increases for inflation for those, for that period of time. So, that's part of it, and again, part of it will be to help fund, part of the reason we're asking for this is the expenditure for, to help with the self-representation help desk. So, it's inflation and also using those funds to help other departments.
Great, and I certainly appreciate you stating that the courts are cooperative partners with the county. I hope we remember that going forward. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Any other comments or questions on the Law Library Fee? Seeing none, thank you. We'll now hear from the Circuit Clerk, Ms. Blakeman, and just to point out, she has two memos, the one with regard to the Courts Automation Fee is on our desks, and the one with regard to the Circuit Clerk Document Storage Fee was in our packet.
Okay. What's that? I'm unplugged?
No. The computer was.
Oh, okay. Good evening. I'm Katie Blakeman, Circuit Clerk. I have two fees that, as the Finance Chair mentioned, that we would ask that you review. What I would really like to ask for you to do this month, as we are not asking for a vote on either of these fees, what I would really like you to do is take a hard look at what we have provided you for the budget projections, as well as the comparables of the fees charged in other counties that are both of proximity, which is within geographical proximity, but also of comparable size, and take the next month to look at this information and ask me any questions that you have. I would invite any county board member who would wish to do so to visit me at the Circuit Clerk's office, and particularly as we begin to talk about document storage, to view the document storage space that we have and to learn more about that as well. So, first, I'd like for you to take a look at the Court Automation Fee. That fee is currently set at ten dollars, and the statutory maximum is fifteen dollars. Expenditures from this fund have to be signed off on by both the Circuit Clerk and the presiding judge, so Judge DeFonis signs off on all of the expenditures as well as myself. This fund currently supports all of the Jano maintenance, so we pay for the, our case management system, which is Jano, we pay for the annual maintenance, which is a hundred thousand dollars annually, fully out of this fund. It also supports the hardware replacement for the computers for the Circuit Clerk's office, as well as for the courts. It also supports the replacement of the AS400, the county AS400, and that happens every seven years, and it also does pay for personnel costs. What this fund does in other counties, and what we would like for this fund also to do, is to support e-business initiatives. So, as we move into the electronic age and what the State Supreme Court is allowing us or providing opportunities for counties to do, this fund would also be able to support some of those initiatives that would provide better efficiency for the county and for the Circuit Clerk's office. This is, this would include things such as, we've discussed previously, about an e-plea-e-guilty system. This also supports the jury system that we talked about a couple of months ago. We would also like to provide public access terminals in the courthouse, in the bank of, where we provide forms for people. Currently, we provide paper forms for attorneys and for post-litigants to complete, to file those, those forms in the Circuit Clerk's office or also in the, when they file in the courtroom. But we have also been providing those in fillable format on our website, and we would like to provide public access terminals for people to be able to complete those in the courthouse and then file within our office. We also have the capability to begin, we have the potential to notify case participants about upcoming court dates, and we could notify them electronically, but that would be at a cost for us, so that is another project that we would like to, that we would like to. Now, as we are looking at the fee, the budget projection, you can see that we have a projected deficit in fiscal year thirteen, and that is the greatest concern to me, as coming into this office and preparing the budget documents, as I began to prepare the budget documents, I was very concerned at what I saw in the depleting fund balance over the last several years and what would happen in the coming years without some increase in revenue. Our revenue has been decreasing steadily, as not only have we had civil filings decrease, because this is charged both in civil filings and in criminal and traffic cases, our traffic case volume has gone down as well. So, that has resulted in a declining revenue in this, in this fund. So, if you take a look at that, you'll be able to see what the budget projections are. If you take, I would also really like you to take a look at the comparables. So, as you look at counties, I provided both proximity, so those counties that are located geographically near Champaign County, and also all of those counties in the Sixth Judicial Circuit, and as you can see, they are all at the statutory maximum except for two, one of which is going to county board this month to discuss the same thing that we are. And then, all of the other counties that I have provided that are of comparable size are also at the statutory maximum. There was a bill introduced in the legislature this session that proposed that the statutory maximum be increased to twenty-five dollars for both court automation and document storage. It was not called for a vote this session, but it was supported by the Illinois Association of Court Clerks and is expected to pass next year, and I have spoken with several Circuit Clerks in my research as I've been preparing all of this information, and many of the counties are looking at a further increase from the fifteen-dollar maximum if that bill were to pass. I would not be looking for such an increase. I'm not a fan of fee increases, but as I was preparing budget documents, I was very concerned about the trajectory of the fund balance for court automation in particular. So, I don't know, Chris, if you would like me to talk first about this fund and take questions?
Let's see if there are any questions about this one, and then we can go on.
Okay.
Ms. Schwartz, did you want to speak? Okay. Do we have anybody else on court automation? Ms. Petrie?
Well, just in fairness, I ran the inflation numbers.
Mm-hmm, sure.
It should only be seven dollars and eighty-eight cents today, and you're jumping up to fifteen. So, I think we need to have some discussion of the perspective of this, just because there is a maximum by statute, and we look at what other counties are doing does not necessarily mean that that should be our big driver, is my point.
That is not the biggest driver for me. I will say, the biggest driver for me is looking at the fund balance and looking at the budget projection over the next several years, and I am very concerned about how we will continue to operate the court system without an increase in revenue. So, for example, the computers that my staff uses, I have thirty-seven employees, and the PCs that they use are budgeted to be replaced this year, and I have been looking very carefully at how we can cut our costs there, because we are projected to have a fund balance that is negative at the end of this fiscal year, and we would then maybe not be able to pay the Jano maintenance contract, which is what drives our entire court system in Champaign County. So, I, that is what is driving the, that is my biggest concern, is looking at the budget projection for this. The comparables is just, that is just for your information, so as you're looking at an increase, that would, would help you understand what other counties are doing. And I would also like to point out that as you look at where other counties are in terms of automation, Champaign County is far behind other counties. We are the largest county in Illinois who is not currently reporting our dispositions to state agencies electronically. We are still doing that on paper, and we have been working very, very hard to get approved by the State Supreme Court to send those dispositions electronically, but it has, it has proved to be very difficult for us, and it's been a long, a long, long process. That is, that is one thing we have been working on, but what other counties are doing in terms of automation, we are very, very far behind.
Ms. Burksen?
What is this, a hundred and fourteen thousand in personnel costs?
That is a court IT position that is paid out of court automation. That is a...
Yeah, and I would also point out that that is salary and all benefits are paid out of this fund, so it's not just salary.
And in my research, as I was talking with other Circuit Clerks about, particularly about, particularly in the larger counties or counties of comparable size who have similar revenue and expenditures as we do, it is very, very common to pay for IT positions out of court automation and is basically standard in any of the larger counties.
Thank you. Before you go on to your second report, I just wanted to make a comment. I think looking at fees with regard to inflation adjustment is great, but I think we also have to keep in mind that healthcare costs and energy costs and the rate at which we have lost tax base to nonprofit institutions and so forth all factor into, all factor into the rate at which we have to increase revenue to be able to continue to provide the services that we're providing. And obviously, none of those things are pegged to the rate of inflation. So I would encourage people to think in terms of the impact of tax caps, impact of loss of taxable base, and to think in terms of, you know, that basically whether we... I mean, I would argue that essentially the increase in healthcare costs alone has been eating up most of the county's natural revenue growth for the last decade. And that I think looking to fees is perhaps not always something we want to do. But I think at this point, we need to look at all sources of revenue to provide the services that we're, that we are providing, let alone to look toward the future. So I appreciate you indulging me in that comment. And why don't you move forward with the other fee?
Okay. And it's also important to note, it is in your memo, but I am asking you to consider not increasing the fee on two case types. And that would be on may appear traffic cases. And those are traffic cases that do not require a court appearance. And then, because in those cases, there is a set bond amount. And if we increase the fee there, it decreases the percentage that goes to the county, to General Corp. So I'm not asking for you to increase that fee. And we are able to do this. There are several other counties who set the fee at a different level for different case types. So the other case type that we are asking, that you not consider an increase on, would be small claims. As we have, we saw a few years ago when small claims fees increased, the filings virtually disappeared. And I consider that to be an access issue and would not like to see that, that fee increased there. So the second fee that I would like for you...
I'm sorry, Ms. Blakeman, if I can interrupt.
Yes.
Can you discuss the recommendation about not having to supply the traffic fees? I learned something when you explained this to me. So I wonder if you can share that with the board, with how fees work with regard to traffic citations?
Sure. So for traffic citations, if you get, for example, a seatbelt ticket, that, the set bond amount is $60. We cannot increase that total amount. That total amount is set by the state. So we can't, you know, charge $70 because we have increased this particular fee. This particular fee comes out of that, that set bond amount. But what is left over after these, these fees are assessed, there are percentages that go to the county, as well as to the arresting agency, and then a part about, that goes to the state. But I quite frankly, don't care about that part that goes to the state. But it, I am concerned about what would go to the arresting agencies in particular.
Thank you.
Okay. So the second fee that I'd like you to take a look at is the court document storage fee. That fee is currently set at $5, and the statutory maximum is 15. It has not been increased since 1994. So there has not been any adjustment over the, over the last several years. This, this fund is primarily used to support the microfilming that we do, that we are required to do by statute. Before the destruction of any record that we, that we hold in Champaign County, we are required to microfilm. So that one copy goes to the state archives, and one copy stays with us. Other types of records, we are required to keep indefinitely. So that includes things like naturalization records, wills, and some other types of cases that we are required to keep indefinitely. So this pays for microfilming and storage of those records. It also pays for the online public access system called PASS. It would provide for the replacement of large equipment that is related to document storage. So, for example, we have five large scanners that we use every day in my office. You can come and take a look at how they're used. We have the large Kodak scanners, and we scan documents in every, every case type. Beginning January of this year, we began scanning every case type except for tax cases because they are simply too large and unwieldy at this time for us to scan. But we do plan to do that in the future. Those scanners cost approximately $20,000 apiece. We, we don't currently know, we don't have a replacement plan for them. As I came into the office, there was not a replacement plan. I would like for us to, to look at a long-term replacement plan for those so that we do not have to come to the county board the day after one breaks and come to, ask for a budget amendment when I will have someone doing absolutely nothing in the time that it takes for us to replace that, that scanner. We're also required by statute to have a microfilm machine. The current machine is very old, and if it were to die, we would have to replace it. And those run anywhere between $10,000 and $20,000, more likely in $20,000 because there's only one provider that I know of. And Kodak went out of business. So we, we have fewer, fewer options there. It also pays for personnel costs. It's three, three positions that are in the records department that would otherwise pose a burden on General Corp. The other thing to note is that we currently send many documents to the Urbana Free Library if we do not destroy those records. So things like, for example, the naturalization records, which have historical significance, and we are required to keep indefinitely. But we simply do not have the space or the, the type of space that would preserve those documents appropriately for the record, for the history of Champaign County. We, we send documents to the Urbana Free Library. General Corp does, well, the county does, does support the Urbana Free Library, the archives. But the circuit clerk's office has never done so. And more than a third of the documents that are sent from the county come from the courts and from the circuit clerk's office. So I think it would be very appropriate for our office to be supporting the Urbana Free Library archives, particularly because of the service that they provide to us in indexing those records and making them available to the public. So that is a service that they provide for us. And I believe that we should be, that we should be supporting them. The other thing that, that other counties are spending document storage funds on is their case management system. Many of you may not be aware of this, but the Jano, which is our case management system, the owner of that, that company passed away earlier this year. And the, the future of the company is, at this point, is being handled and is managed by the son of the previous, of the owner. But the future of that case management system is uncertain. And if we were to have to purchase a new case management system, I know many of you were on the board the last time this happened. The county is not in any position to, to do so at this time in discussions with Ms. Bucie and, as we are looking at this. So part of the rationale for considering an increase to the document storage fund is to provide for the possibility of replacing or, or developing internally a case management system. I would also direct you to, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. And I would also, in, same as the court automation fund, I would direct you to looking at the comparables that are similar to the court automation fund and the budget projections as well. Okay.
Thank you. I had Ms. Schwartz from earlier.
Okay. To clarify, in your appendix fee, you say, your appendix fee, you're talking about including a $5 increase, but you're actually talking about a $10 increase, correct? From 5 to 15?
Yes. I'm sorry that that was a typo.
That's fine. Okay. So I have one issue that's presentation. I told you, that's an easy typo to fix. The other one is more substantive. The typo is there is something there going on that's not carrying over. But I'm sure that's an easy fix.
Okay.
The concern I have is that we're building a fund balance that is significantly building. Now, if there are some expenses that you think you're going to have that you didn't put in there, then I would like to see them.
Okay.
But to have a projection of expenses that presumably includes all expenses and then see fund balance going up to half a million dollar, I don't see the need for that. If, if there'll be expenses that we cannot forecast now, we can always go back next year or the year after and change the fees as necessary.
Right.
But considering all the other fees going up, if we don't have to, I would prefer not to.
Absolutely. I understand that. And we can, we can amend that to include some of the projected expenses that we know we will have. The replacement of scanners, for example.
Right. But also, I mean, I counted, you said $20,000 each times 5. Okay, so that will be $100,000. We're still not up to half a million. And as I said, considering that people have to pay that, and that's a form of a user tax, I would prefer not to collect it before we know we need it.
Absolutely.
So I would think that raising it by $5, I understand it's less than the other counties, but it still seems to me like that would cover...
That doesn't concern me if it's less than other counties.
Right. So that would seem to cover the expenses.
What's more important to me is that we, that we meet our budget and that we are, that we're not having a deficit.
Right. So I would, while you're fixing the table, maybe if you can look at what a $10...
Sure. We can absolutely provide that.
If that keeps us balanced, I would think that that would be a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quisenberry, next.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate a point here. I was formerly on the Urbana Free Library Board of Directors. And when the archives was established, there was a certain dollar amount that the county paid to the library. And I believe that dollar amount stayed the same for about 15 years, maybe a little longer, before, a couple of years ago, when, when it started to go up incrementally in small amounts. But over that same time, and that was the county's support. So the county has always been a supporter of having an archive, which I think is, I think is important. But I know that the, the previous clerk would occasionally deliver large volumes of records to be stored in the archives. And they never came with an envelope of money or anything along with them to cover the labor costs, which, if you know what an archivist does, can be pretty intensive from a labor standpoint. And it requires someone who has some understanding of handling documents for preservation. So I think it's a good idea, and I appreciate the fact that you're planning for the future for how to support maintaining our records, making sure they're taken care of correctly and indexed and put online so they're accessible to the public. Another, another important thing. So I, I will be supporting an increase. I do, I do agree with Ms. Schwartz that the longer-term balance of this account would seem to go up to a degree that it's not clear that we need yet. So I would like to see that $10 amount as well.
Absolutely.
Ms. Burksen.
How much would it cost to replace Juno?
Ms. Bucie may have a better...
It costs $2.8 million 11 years ago.
I think we're hoping we don't have to replace it. Mr. McGuire?
Yeah, and I would say too, I guess I've heard a couple of different things. These are required things for the circuit clerk's office to do, whether it's to take care of the courts or the documents, that if, if the funds aren't there for Juno and some of these scanners and copying the documents, that somehow the county has to come up with this, this money, right? To pay for the employees and certain things.
If, if we do not microfilm, we cannot destroy records. So what would happen in, in that case is that we would have to keep the paper. So we would be required to keep the, the paper files indefinitely. So if you can imagine, so just a small case file is about this size. So if we have approximately 40,000 cases annually, and that's in a low year, and these are small case files, tax case files are about this large. So just imagine how much space that takes up. And if we don't have the ability to send the, the records that are no longer required for us to keep the paper, if we can't send them to be microfilmed, which is, a microfilm piece is about, a reel of microfilm is about this size, we would need to find space for those records.
But my, my point is if the fees aren't there to, to build those funds, then the county itself, the general fund, has to provide those funds.
That certainly would...
And other budget issues that we have in the future...
That certainly would be true in case of personnel. We would have, I believe it would then be, under, General Corp would have, that's where the most, most of the salaries in our office are, are paid out of. If that helps. One other project that I did not mention is the drainage maps. I don't know how many of you know that the circuit clerk's office maintains the drainage maps for the counties, so of the drainage districts. And they are not really accessible to the public in any way right now. So it is a, a project and a passion of mine to take those maps and have them imaged. And we have been working with the GIS department if we can get them imaged, which does cost us a significant amount of money per map because they are very, very large. And they are, you know, if they were written, are created in the 1800s, we have to be very, very careful with them. But we have been working with the GIS department to then plot those maps and then provide that publicly online so that people would be able to go to the website and know which drainage district do I live in and learn more about, for example, drainage district elections and when they would be able to, whether they would be eligible to vote and when those elections are held. So that would be supported by this fund as well.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Carter?
Kate, I'm looking at the beginning banners in 2008, 2008.
Okay. In the document storage fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your funding comes from what? Fees?
This comes from a fee that is charged in civil filings at the time of the first pleading, as well as in traffic ordinance violation, conservation violation, and criminal cases.
Fees is the only source of funding you get?
Yes, it only comes from fees.
Well, they were, they were doing pretty good. I'm trying to see how to slide.
Well, the revenue has decreased significantly because the filings in Champaign County have gone down. And then the fund balance has been depleted because we are spending approximately $100,000 more than we are taking in annually. So that is what is happening to the fund balance.
It went down in a hurry, I tell you that.
It certainly did. It wasn't, it was very concerning to me as I, as I looked at this, at this information.
Thank you, Ms. Blakeman. I see there are no more comments or questions. I want to thank Ms. Blakeman for coming and presenting the request. We'll certainly take that up with the September committee, the whole meeting when we start to look at fees. And I see Judge DeFonis is back there. Appreciate your showing up too, sir. Next, we will go to Mr. Delashmett at Bellwether Advantage.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Delashmett. I'm the principal and owner of Bellwether. We just recently completed a, a fee review for the sheriff's department, county clerk, and the county recorder. and the County Recorder. So you have a long document in front of you that has a lot of numbers in it, and actually, if you can make it through it in the amount of time that I'm going to talk about it, I'd really like to have your resume because I'm short on people right now, and I could use people who understand this kind of information quickly. I have, in projection here, we're going to try and simplify a discussion by talking about the graphics that are inside of the report, and I'll, and I'll summarize it. A few things in, in opening. So, so first of all, I have to recognize the county administrator, the sheriff, the clerk, and recorder for both their support and, and leadership in making it through all of the questions that it takes to do a fee review. So the reason that that's so daunting at times is that it is not based on a formula like, like inflation, or CPI, or any other category like that. A fee review is, by definition, an aggregate of every cost. So the numbers that you're going to see are not an opinion of what things should cost, they are what they cost. So when we walk through that, and each department, each, each transaction had the same type of evaluation. We look at the total labor cost, which is all of the base salary plus all of the benefits, plus all of their share of management costs all the way up to the board. So the aggregate cost of all of the board action necessary to support all of the departments are actually allocated down to a one-minute value of an employee serving a constituent. So that's the level of detail on the labor. The level of detail on all of the materials, all of the consumables, everything that you buy is all aggregated down as much as possible. If it supports a specific fee process, then the costs are aligned there. But if it doesn't support a specific fee process, then it's divided among all of the fee transactions that happen in the department. So we're talking about cost factors that are in the tenths of a cent. All of the equipment is given the same type of, of review, and the equipment comes in a lot of different categories. There is very specific equipment that is used for fees. Now, and you think about plat recording in the recorder's office and a scanner bigger than his desk. It only has one purpose, it's expensive, and all of that cost is aggregated to only the process of the plat. Now, when you come up from that, the copier that's in the corner can be used for a lot of different things, so that copier is distributed all the way across as well. So all of those cost categories come into formula math, and we literally come by with, when somebody walks in to ask for a marriage license, what does it cost the county to provide that service? So the report that you have in front of you is fairly, fairly detailed. There are hundreds and hundreds of hours of analytics behind it that are much more detailed, but I'm going to attempt to make it through this by just talking about the charts that are in your report. So, so let's start with this first illustration, which, if you'll recall, the last time I was here, we were talking about the preliminary review, where we did a quick horizontal check of each of the departments and did a calculation of what the potential fees were using leading indicators. At that time, we projected for the department a little under $500,000, or for the, for these three departments, a little under $500,000. That was a bit challenged for a number of reasons that I'm going to talk about briefly now and then touch again at the end. So the first is, the, the county is challenged in its cost allocation of all of the infrastructure. So in, in, in many counties, and, and you have the data, but it's, it's just in a lot of different places. In many counties, they have the ability to take their total cost and can allocate it down to a finite point, which allows leadership to make much more informed decisions about exactly what does it cost to run a law library? You can aggregate all of your cost of that and make a very specific decision. So that was a bit of a challenge, which led us to underestimate the preliminary. So on, on the compliant review, which is, meets all of the state statutes, and I, and I want to apologize because we didn't quite hit 6,000% ROI on my feet. If we try a little bit harder, I can get to 6,000% ROI. So, this is the chart that you're going to see time and time again. So this is in the, in the documents, and they're going to, there's a chart that we'll hit here in a second that'll have more numbers, and Carter's got liver pills. But the charts will tell you a story. So the first story is, the red bars are bigger than the blue bars. Your costs are higher than your fees. The majority of that reason is labor. So if I took every fee, and I had to make an estimated guess of what caused the increase in every one of those categories, it's fees, and it's retirement contribution rates and medical, annual medical cost per employee. Now, that's not all of it, but that's a big part of it. Drilling down from there, and the county clerk has a significant in-house IT capability, but they still have IT demands. So they have a lot of expense inside of those costs that add to the red bar going up. So as we look across that, the things that we look at, and I'm, I'm an admitted numbers geek, I attend all the meetings, and I've been all through the, the recognition. When you look at those bars, what we look for is a correlation, or does it make sense, the curve of the red relative to the curve of the blue? And that's kind of our logic check of, is anything jumping out that doesn't make sense? Well, if you look at the ones that are in the middle there, the additional copies and the three or four that are in the middle, they have a significant higher rate than the others. So the reason is, you look at those activities, those activities are highly labor-based activities, making copies, doing research, collecting information. So the reason that's jumped is because it has a disproportionate weight of the labor in that activity. So, again, we are reflecting the cost, these bars represent this chart. So I've tried to make this, this soup sandwich of numbers here at least as appealing as possible, of red is your actual cost, and I'm sorry the charts, the red's not showing up as, as well as I would have liked it to, but you have it in front of you. And then next to that is what your current fee is, and next to that is what the gap is between your ga, your cost and your current fee. And then the potential increase, this is where I'm afraid I'm going to create a bit of a conundrum for you. That, that potential increase is the gap multiplied by the volume of the prior year. So if all things are equal from the prior year, this would be how much more revenue would come in on these fees if you matched it to your expense. So as you're in your budget discussions, you have, by, by completing this study, you have the ability to raise your rates to this point and be within the statutes or the definitions. So let me stop there because we're going to do this, that discussion three times. Does the method make sense?
Okay, Ms. Schwartz.
Somewhat, and I'll tell you why. I, assuming that those allocated costs are correct, obviously, because we don't know any better. I would suppose that covering labor costs, which is really the only variable cost, makes sense. Covering facilities, not really, because first of all, you cannot change facilities, and second, I already pay my general corporate taxes. So I think that I already paid for those in my overall taxes. They don't have to be paid twice when I use whatever, when I get booked by the sheriff or buy a marriage license.
Right, so the.
So I would like, I mean, I, I appreciate that you provided those separate columns so we could make a choice of what you call, I mean, in your mind, we should cover the total cost, including the allocated facilities. Or allocate equipment. In my mind, we should, at most, maybe cover it, because we already paid taxes anyway for many other things, but cover the labor costs, and so I have a problem with allocating the rest.
Right, so, so thank you for that. It allows me to clarify a bit that the square footage calculation in the facility is not the totality of all the facilities. So when we look at the square footage, and let's stay with the plat example with the big plotter, the square footage cost of that process is the square foot print of that plotter. So it literally is the space and the cost of the building relative to performing that exact function. So, so it's not.
Yeah, but it's already covered by the General Corp, you know, all the buildings and so on, and we already pay county taxes into that, so.
Right, so I can say.
This is a philosophical question, I mean, you asked.
Exactly right, exactly.
So this is for us to decide, but you asked if the methodology makes sense, and I think the, as long as we stick to let's separate labor from total, and then it will be up to us to say we want to cover labor, we want to cover facilities, we want to cover all three, we, whatever.
Right, and, and I appreciate that. I'll, I'll add just a footnote that if facilities with the changing operations cost and maintenance on longer-decaying buildings and, and current utilities cost, longer buildings are actually becoming more of a variable cost rather than a fixed cost.
If I can sort of restate what Rachel said a different way, I think we're sort of looking at the classic, you know, school, school funding problem, right? People pay school tax, but at the same time, they're expected to buy school supplies and sometimes pay for books and maybe chip in to support the football team and so forth. And so there, the philosophical dilemma with fees is always, you know, what, if I got to pay fees for everything, what was I getting for my, what am I getting for my tax dollars, right? So I think what you've given us here should help. I think, I think everybody at this table is probably going to have a slightly different view of what it's appropriate to charge fees for and what it's appropriate to, to subsidize with the, with the property tax and, and sales tax. So I, I thank you, Rachel, I think that's a great thing for all of us to be thinking about as we move forward.
So I, I think you just answered one of my two questions, but I wasn't listening closely enough to be sure or not. Where, where do utilities show up in the?
In the operations cost of the facility.
So it's in the facility column?
Yes.
Okay, and because you just said that the space of the plotter goes into that mix square footage-wise, would I be right to assume that the space allocated for the staff that are doing that function are, is also in there?
So, so the space, as in this desk, the desk is useless unless I can sit here, so the footprint does include my space.
So like the cube or whatever?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
If I could ask one, one more on that. What about, and I'm not sure if it's substantial on these, but where would like consumables go, supplies and things like that?
Right, so any consumable, the paper that goes into that plat product is, is very specific to that, so the cost of that roll of paper is, is aggregated into the cost per transaction.
But which, in what, what column? Is that facility, equipment? It's not labor, right?
Well, so plats are in recorder, and the example that I gave up is, is the clerk, so.
Oh, so not, so what you're saying is there aren't substantial supply costs in any of these clerk items, which there probably are.
So what's interesting, the, the, the marriage certificate, the fancy certificate is an example of a small but very accumulative cost for the clerk's office, yeah.
And, and where is that on the, on the, on page nine?
So it would fall under, actually, it would fall under equipment.
Okay.
Because it's truncated, it's equipment slash consumables.
Equipment and supplies, okay. Thank you.
So, so what's interesting, and, and if you have a hard time sleeping, this is a great read, the Office of Management and Budget published A-87, which is the formula for calculating all, everything that I'm talking about, so we didn't make it up. There's methods out there that are dictated rather stringently on how to do it. So, so the next department, with your, with your permission, I'll continue.
I'm, I'm sorry, hold on, Bruce. Was there a question, Rachel?
I'm not sure which department we're in, but there is also a column for other, so what would other be?
Recorder.
Yeah, that's in, on recorder, I'm sorry.
Tell me what page you're on, please.
15.
Yeah, we're doing the clerk right now.
Oh, okay, so we can, when you get to the other one, if you don't mind clarifying what other would be.
Oh, okay, and all other, okay, got it, okay.
So are there, are there guests I should ask, are there comments, are there comments specific to the county clerk operation, or would the county clerk like to say anything? Sorry, Mr. Harky.
Excuse me, I'm usually loud enough, as we all know. I had a question on this chart on number seven, I'm just noticing, and this kind of just popped in my head, and I have to ask, we, it, your cost for a civil union license is $5 cheaper than your cost for a marriage license. Is there a reason for that?
I, I don't see that, sorry. I see the same cost for both.
On page seven.
The yellow table that we're looking at?
No, I'm sorry, I'm back on.
You're reading the wrong bar, it's the blue bar.
That's the cost, oh, forgive me, sorry. Thank you, Betsy.
If I could.
No, 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 that's not correct, that's not correct. Current fees listed as blue.
So what I'm noticing, sir, is that the, the chart with the numbers.
Yes.
Reflects a equal 3730.
Okay.
For both. I'm not exactly sure why the marriage license red bar went up.
The bar came out that way, okay, very, very cool.
We'll figure that out.
Cody?
Just a couple of things. Marriage license and civil union licenses are included on this chart, but a cost study is not required under state statute to raise that fee to the statutory maximum, which is $75. Those of you who have been on the board for a while will remember that the county administrator has proposed or has brought to you potential fee increases for marriage and civil union licenses at least twice in recent years, and you have raised it, you have raised it in steps. But there is no cost study required to do that, but it was included in this simply so that you could get an idea for what the cost of the service provides. And other, other than that, does anybody have any questions about any of these as it applies to our office, or any questions that I can answer for you?
Seeing none, why don't you move on, Bruce?
Great. So we'll follow that same pattern two more times, and then, so the rest of it gets pretty easy. One of the, one of the advantages of an in-depth fee review is the ability to create transparency of where expenses come from. So in the, in the Sheriff's Department, we had a number of ways to look at how some of the work occurs. So I want to just call out the civil process and then the, the chart next to it, process, service, labor. So in prior studies, and, and we've done it this way in the past also, the, the cost, the labor cost of the deputy delivering the, the process all the way to your door was included in one base cost, and then there was miles on top of that. Through discussions with the, the sheriff and his staff, it became clearer if we viewed it as the process as if served from the desk or served before the deputy got into the car, separate from the labor cost of the deputy actually traveling to somebody's house, separate from the allowed mileage that they can charge in there. So, so it's a new look at a fee. Previously, you would have seen just a single number of civil process, not those two fees. The other large categories are without a doubt the same impact of labor costs related to them. So on the, on this chart, you can see, again, I'll pull it out as the example, that the civil process, the difference in the cost relative to your current fee, but then the process service labor at 73 cents per mile, which is actually 73 cents per minute of labor cost, notwithstanding that they're not going to actually go 60 miles an hour while they're downtown, but it was a, it was a nice number that we could carry all the way out. And then average times the predicted volume, so the $34,000 potential on the right is 73 cents times the average distance times the volume, so there's a little math hurdle right there in the middle of it. The green chart on the right is not the relevant chart for you, the, the actual cost is the relevant column for you. The green one is just kind of a informational and if all of these are true. Recorder now, I, I always love coming to Champaign because I, I learn a lot waiting for my turn to come.
I'm sorry, if I can, if I can jump in, do we have any comments or questions with regard to the sheriff's portion of the fee report? Or would I see the sheriff back there, would you like to say anything, sir?
Unless you guys have questions, I, I will say this, the last four fee, I guess the mic.
Yeah, absolutely. Come on up.
These fees are, are set by you guys, not by me, according to statute. The last four fees in, in the prior column, Bruce, where we talk about civil process base, process service, labor, civil action standby, public, public posting, those are fees that, for example, if, if I'm a landlord and I want to sue to evict a tenant, I have to serve that tenant, they pay us to serve it. If, if I'm in an auto accident, I want to sue somebody for damages, again, we, thank you. We get the, we get paid to serve that. Another big category, if I'm a bank and I'm foreclosing, will they hire us to go serve the initial process to start the lawsuit? I am, I am suggesting to you that if you want to adjust these fees, it's entirely up to you, this goes into the general corporate fund to fund all of our operations, it's not like I can use this in any particular fashion, so it's up to you. I'm suggesting, particularly with respect to those four fees, if you're going to do it, you consider setting a maximum. To some extent, we are in competition with private process servers and private detectives. About the only thing that they won't do is stand by on a civil eviction where there could be violence, then they're always going to refer to us. So it's up to you again how you want to do this, but I'm suggesting whatever you do, if you make an adjustment, you set it maximum and, and allow whoever the sheriff is at the time to adjust that up or down depending, quite frankly, on competition. They typically will set their fees a little below ours, intentionally. The other two fees, just so you know it, in essence, they're, they're jail fees, the first one, you guys set, you guys set all these, by the way, back in, I think, 2003, so they're about 10 years, so there's been no adjustments. Quite frankly, the bond out fee, we waive, if, if, if you have a $100 misdemeanor bond fee set by statute and you've only got $105 on you, well, we're not going to keep you in jail to, right now, to collect the other 15. It's, it's not productive for us, we'll waive that if somebody can't afford it. The next fee down, just, just so you know what it is, the, the book and release, if, if we give you a notice to appear so you don't go to jail, and we're trying to do more and more of that, or if the state's attorney decides they want to use a summons to bring you into court, you don't get booked in through the jail, but ultimately, if Julia decides to charge you, you have to go through the jail. you have to go through the jail because there has to be a fingerprint record and all that stuff. So that second fee, book and release, is what's charged. If you're brought into court on a criminal case, you're not actually put in jail, the court orders you to go out and submit to, to the book in and bond out process, and that's what that fee is.
Sheriff, a question about the booking fee, is that, is that paid by the person who's being booked? Or is that paid by the arresting department?
There is a book in fee that we have an agreement with the, for example, I'll pick one, Urbana Police. It's a consistent fee that Dave Madigan negotiated, that is not what you're looking at here. That, that book in fee to the other agencies is for information we give them, it's a contractual matter between the sheriff and those agencies. It's not set by the board.
Okay, thank you, I wanted to clarify that.
Quick question, what, what is a public posting?
Again, a lot of things have to be posted in three public spots. If they hire a deputy to do, it's, it's sort of a civil process type thing, if they hire a deputy to do it, we'll post it at the courthouse. We might do the Urbana City Building, we might do Champaign City Building, or out here at Brookings. It requires three postings, they, it's, again, it's a civil case where they pay us to do that.
So that'd be like a before foreclosure or something along those lines?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carter, uh, sorry, Ms. Carter.
Carl. Lorraine.
Ms. Carter.
Okay, did I understand you to say that if a person was incarcerated and they were bonding out and didn't have enough money to pay their full bond, that you all would waiver the rest of it?
We, I view it, that, that we can waive the sheriff's portion, which right now is twenty bucks. We cannot waive, as things currently are, like I said, a misdemeanor, the average misdemeanor is a hundred dollar cash bond. We can't waive any portion of that, but we can waive our bond out fee, I think, and we do.
Never heard anybody say that before.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz.
Are you going to bring your request, meaning your interpretation of what the fees should be, to the next meeting? Similar to what Ms. Blakeman, or are we supposed to decide?
Actually, I'm probably going to bring a recommendation for the fees in the context of the overall general corporate fund and this information.
Okay, so it will have.
And I will work with the sheriff to, to make sure that he is, right, exactly, yeah.
So we don't mess up whatever it is you need to.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one of these strange, this is one, this is one of these strange assignment responsibility things, right? Where the county board sets the fee, but the sheriff does the work to earn the fee, essentially.
Essentially, and as Bruce pointed out, some of these fees, you guys cover the sheriff's office cost, one way or another, through the general corporate fund, so this just, in essence, goes back to the general corporate.
Any more, any more comments or questions with regard to the sheriff? Ms. Burksen.
How many of these fees do you actually collect? How many do the people have the money?
If you're talking the bond out, if you're talking the, the jail bond out fee, I'm, I don't know the exact number. I would guess more than two-thirds pay that bond out fee. Book and release fee, most folks pay that because they know they're getting quite an advantage, they never really go to jail. So with most of them, they're quite happy, plus they have time to arrange it. The civil process fee and all that stuff, it's, it's sort of like, I think Roger explained it. If a person is indigent and wants to sue you, they can apply for a fee waiver, the court issues that fee waiver, we can't charge them, we still have to go serve it. But if you can afford it, I mean, if you're, no offense, if you're Bucie Bank and you want to foreclose or sue somebody, yeah, they pay a hundred percent, almost a hundred percent of those types we collect.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Now, Bruce, onto the recorder.
Great, so the, the recorder, there are a number of fees in here, and I'll, I'll get to the other. So, recording financial documents and all other. So a financial document is, is any document that deals with a mortgage or a release of a lien or something like that. The all other, as a retired service member, I can have my discharge papers, DD two fourteen, recorded by the recorder and pay the fee, and it becomes an official document then.
What I was, maybe I would clarify, I'm talking about on page fifteen, the column called other, not cost. Right, so there's labor and equipment and consumables, and then there is other, which is pretty significant, that, that's really what I was asking.
Oh, I see.
What, what would that other consist of?
So the, the other in that category is the Fiddler contract for the recording system that, it's, it's dedicated technology for the recorder's office. Yes. Yes. So, so actually, that's a great segue, though. So when you look at the recorder's fees, the, the aggregate cost includes some of the technology, but the automation fee in the past has been used for, for the desktop computers, it's been used for some of the temporary part-time staff that does data entry. There's been, I remember last time I was here, there was discussion about using some of that fee, and it's all allowed to use it for labor, doing processes that leads towards the technology. So the difference in how these three fees are laid out in this study is that the, the automation portion has a five-year plan on upgrades to the existing software and upgrades to the existing service contract with Fiddler. And the, and we're seeing a lot of counties do this in order to move the blip of software updates out of the general fund budget discussions and actually force recorders to accumulate a balance to be able to fund that themselves, rather than, you know, come to the board every three or four years and ask for fifty thousand dollars in addition to the base. So, so it's a little bit of a different twist on, on automation, it is, it's becoming more and more common in recorder's office.
Ms. Quinbar.
Okay, now, now that we've found the description of other in here, I'm curious what RHSP stands for.
RHSP, Rental Housing Support Program, and that's actually a significant fee that the recorder collects, nine dollars, and distributes directly to the state. So it's, it is a pass-through expense.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Michaels?
I just have a question here, on page fourteen, where you have the document recording, all other, you have the, the blue line at thirty-five, is that just because that's the flat fee? Or is that the amount? Because I know that it's a flat fee of thirty-five and then a dollar for every page after the standard. So this is, were you just taking a base?
So this is the flat fee, yes, ma'am, so, so what we've found, and this has been.
And that's not really what the income is, that's just kind of what the base.
Right, so, so documents start with a base, right now, it's thirty-five dollars and a dollar for each additional page over four pages, I believe the standard is. What we have found is that to be able to move that dollar for additional page becomes fin, really finite math and, and fails time and again to try and break, go over a dollar. So, same chart for recorder. And we're nearing the end of the show. Okay, so, so as we're running around, when we, when I first met you, I said what we didn't do. So we don't do staff models, we don't do efficiency reviews, there's a lot of things that, we focus on your expense. While we're standing around, we tend to notice things. So in looking for your indirect cost, and, and we did really come up with a pretty good conservative number, but the county, in fact, doesn't have a cost allocation plan that would allow you to have that kind of finite information at your fingertips. We strongly recommend it, we're, we're currently doing it for several other counties. Love to help if you need to help. Technology and in-user computing, so there's a difference between big T technology and small T technology. So what we found is that the end-using connection between the software, there's a bit of a dis, or appears to be a bit of a disconnect in the software they're using and the work that they're doing. So there was simple things like lots of screen changes or lots of program changes to, to more dramatic things, and, and we've kind of jokingly called it unintended wellness program in the sheriff's department, that the network printer is about fifty feet from the people doing the work. So every time they want to print something, which is quite often, they hike back and forth and back and forth. Those kinds of things, you can really get into a business technology needs assessment, just to figure out what the best use is. The last one, we've been all through your budget, planning and zoning, we're doing planning and zoning in four other counties right now. It is not a statute-controlled fee as, as clearly as the clerk and recorder are. However, it is contested fee, where a lot of people want to know, why do you charge that? And our methods will help you show that. Same for animal, animal control, your budget, looks like you've got two departments that are, are struggling, we'd be happy to help you with that. Because that's what we do.
Thank you, the recorder is, as I understand it, in Hawaii, probably having a lot more fun than we are right now. So she's not available to answer questions, but if there are any comments or questions about the recorder's portion, we can direct those to Bruce or give Deb a shot, are there any? Mr. McGuire?
Not necessarily about the recorder's questions, but about the whole comment about, you know, kind of quantifying these three offices and their costs and their fee structure, and I'm not necessarily saying I wanted, you know, fifteen dollar fee for every one of them. But I, I think the difference is between, you know, what taxpayers pay as far as their taxes are concerned, because that was a question people were talking about, and what they pay as a fee, you know, you know. We are paying taxes, and there are a lot of things that aren't quantified here that the county does, and we're taking care of it. Or even the clerk's office, where we're quantifying what a marriage license costs, so we have to understand what that is. But we aren't quantifying the cost of, what it would cost to vote, and that's actually happening in that office, too. So, you know, we're just trying to find out what the real costs are so we can identify what that fee might be when we're looking at the fees. So just kind of looking at both of them to make sure we capture what the real costs of these things are.
Just if I could, Chris, thank you, I'd just like to echo what the sheriff said, in that, in, if the board should decide to raise any of the fees that are presented to you from the county clerk's office, that revenue would go into the general corporate fund, which would then support the operations of all of the county departments. That doesn't go into a special pot of money that the county clerk's office gets to use for whatever improvements. So this is, this is a decision that you get to make in the holistic approach, the entire county budget. It's not necessarily specific to, to our office, except that we happen to be the revenue collection point.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz.
Just, so I'm totally sure about the other, was a component, and it was a significant fee gap. Is there a component there that's variable? Because you said some of that is stuff that the recorder has to actually file for each case, and other is just an allocation of more general, let's renew our equipment, so.
So I could, I could better answer that question with a follow-up note.
Okay.
So, so there's tens of thousands of line items in this study, so.
Okay.
I'm not going to do it justice.
Okay, I was just, because it's really important to me to figure out the variable, like what's really.
Right.
Associated with that particular transaction as opposed to a general allocation.
Right. So with your permission, I'll provide the administrator an example, an answer to that question.
All right, thank you, Ms. Petrie. Mr. Carter, I didn't see your hand, go ahead, Mr. Carter.
I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying, but I'm trying to figure out to process the same documents that we always had, what makes them now more expensive?
It's, it's interesting that the expense probably hasn't increased, but the fee that you're charging is causing the county general fund to subsidize the activity. So it, it costs you more than thirty-five dollars to do a recorded document a month ago or six months ago, but.
Well, I know that, but I'm trying to figure out what are the problem that makes that go up?
I, I don't know that I would use the word problem, sir, I would say that there are, there are inherent changes year over year to, to IMRF contribution rates, to medical plans, to equipment costs, software costs, that just over time will add an expense to the cost of doing business. In your example earlier, that the, the food increasing in cost for, for the, the average worker. So it didn't happen overnight, it incrementally, the cost of gasoline to deliver the food, the cost of storage to store it, all aggregated to increase the cost of that pizza.
It's not getting any better, is it?
No. But I can do that work, too, so give them, have them give me a call.
And I guess if I could add, and I guess if I could add some, we don't know that these fees ever covered the cost of providing the service. I mean, somebody someday said, we think the fee ought to be thirty-five bucks, and I don't think anybody ever sat down and said, does it cost more or less than thirty-five bucks to do the work? So this may be the first time we've looked at this in a lo, certainly in a long time.
In our experience, particularly on some of the smaller transactions, like a copy of a document non-certified, the cost is frequently higher than the fee, but the, the cost just doesn't pale well in public. You know, I want a copy of something, well, it cost me thirteen dollars, that just isn't going to play well. And, and quite frequently, our clients don't go there on those small transactions.
Mr. Holton?
For a little context in our office, I think the last time the county did a fee study for these three offices, which included our office, was two thousand and three, and at that point, the office holder lobbied the board against any fee increases. I will lobby you neither for or against, it's entirely your decision, but I want you to have that information so you have the understanding of the context in which the fees were set in two thousand and three, and entirely may have not covered the cost of providing the services even back then. And of course, the cost of providing the services has increased in the intervening ten years.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie.
Building on Ms. Schwartz's comments, I agree, I'm not sure facilities should be part of the column because these things need to be done and there needs to be a building within it. So folding that into the fees, I find, I find that basically double-dipping.
So I think the challenge would be that the, the standards of that calculation are controlled by federal. So OMB A-87 dictates how you have to calculate those indirect costs.
So you're saying you've just identified what the costs are, it's up to us whether we decide we ought to charge the fee for that.
I mean, you can allocate your prices, whatever, right.
Okay, well, I look at it that, you know, if you're going to build a Taj Mahal for the, for the county building, you might put in everything above if you built the base building and then above that, okay. Second is, if Ms. Bucie is coming back with a memo of recommendations on these fees, actually, what I would like to see happen, and again, it's based on the Schwartz comment, that building up this huge balance because of fee gets raised up X amount at a certain year may not be the best way to go, and, and rather, I would rather see it in a three-tier step in that the board approves those three-tier steps in the fees, and at the third year, then, part of the proviso is that those fees are looked at again, rather than saying, okay, let's raise it to fifteen dollars, and then fifteen years later, we do this again. That, I don't think is really the best practice, and that seems to be what has, has happened in the past. And I'd like to see us take another approach on this.
Mr. Maxwell, New County heard from.
Thank you. I'm looking at the document storage fee, five dollars proposed increase, and if you look at the projections, we are building a balance out to fiscal year seventeen, but there may be a point at which we peak and break over.
Yeah, Gary, I'm, I'm going to ask, we're really, are we back on the county clerk, or, sorry, the circuit clerk? I think you're. Ms. Blakeman, why don't you go out and answer that, I think it's to you, right?
I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem, Gary, I, I mean, it's all one, basically all one agenda item, but, but Bellwether only did the last three.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, I just want to make sure I'm.
I, I think I'm addressing the concern that Ms. Petrie had over maybe in, going with a staggered fee structure. And also, I think, Ms. Schwartz may have had similar. But it looks to me like on the document storage fee, and that's the example I want to use, it applies to all, everything else we're talking about, is that you're projecting that we're going to build a balance out to fiscal year seventeen. At some point, past that point, if you'd gone ahead and constructed. At some point past that point, if you'd gone ahead and constructed this thing on further out, we may have found a peaking place so that the flat fee would have carried us for a period of maybe 10 years with the same fee. And that may be the reason why we might want to just set a flat fee of $5 and leave it go until we do get back down to a similar situation that we are in FY '13.
So are you asking that I provide a budget projection that goes farther out?
It might be interesting to see if we actually do peak over and over a period of years start to decline like we have from FY '08 down to FY '13.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's sort of in line with what is... Was it, I'm sorry, was it Mr. Harkie or Ms. Petrie? Who asked about the specifics of, you know, we're buying this equipment. When are we going to have to replace it? What are the costs?
Well, the general equipment is Ms. Burksen.
Okay, Ms. Burksen, whoever was it? We'd like to, I think, if you can flesh out, you know, the... I agree that, you know, the goal is not to get to an arbitrary, unless there's a justification for a particular fund balance, in which case, we'd like to know what it is. I think the goal, the first step, I think, is we need to arrest the decline in the fund balance. So I'd say that's like option number one, and then option number two would be if you can identify specific future needs and maybe when those might occur and project based on that. Is that...
Yes, I can absolutely do that.
Have I gotten to everybody's concerns? Mr. McGuire.
Well, I've heard the word "huge fund balance" used a couple of times. I don't think any of these include what inflation impact will have. We don't know when some of this equipment will have to be purchased and what impact those will have on those funds as those funds grow or not grow, going out, you know, five years or whatever, '17. Right now, all three funds, as they're listed, are in a deficit. So they'll have to get to a point where they actually do have some growth. I mean, and I don't know that we've decided that the fees will be greater than the amount that they're currently, their current cost. So I think we should wait until the suggestions come back and decide what we do.
Thank you. I think this has been an informative discussion. Maybe take one more question. Mr. Quisenberry.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify these additional observations. The way you talked about them, it sounds a little bit like you had your eyes open for business process improvement opportunities. Is that what you were looking for? And so by looking at this relatively short list, can we assume that there's not a lot of waste in these processes currently? Or is it just you didn't notice anything?
Oh, that's a great question.
And we're not going to pay you anymore for the answer to that.
No, that's fine. And...
Well, we might, depending on what we have to do about it.
I started by acknowledging the three department heads. So we see a lot of counties. We see a lot of ways work is done. And so your departments are well organized. They appear to be well-trained. They appear to be trying to optimize the tools that they have in front of them. I think there are a couple of structural issues, particularly in this building, that create movement waste among people. So you've got a lot of paper materials over here and your people over there. So you lose a significant amount of productivity from your staff by moving around. The printer example in the sheriff's office, I could tell you that I just saw that over and over and over again, of people, productivity isn't in the calculation of how the floors are laid out. The technology, I was here last time when we were talking, you were talking about servers and the expenses. I know that you have a paradigm around technology, and I use the example of big T. I'm not sure that that's carrying all the way down to the little T, that the people who are actually doing the work have a needs analysis that's summing up to what your technology should be. And you're probably losing, and I could not quote the language used by a couple of people who were describing the software when I was saying, "Well, can you give me this one number?" And this lovely lady said, "I would have to print 485 pages, print, because I can't see it on my screen. I'd have to print 485 pages to give you that number." And so the opportunities are there.
One last word, Ms. Quisenberry.
I'm just following, I'm following up to where I was going with this, which is, I noticed you have on here a business technology needs assessment as a recommendation. I mean, this, I'm saying this more for my friends around the table here. Some members of this board can remember in 2007, when we spent money to get a study done by Maximus on our technology infrastructure, and it gave us a bunch of advice of what to do and what we needed to be thinking about for the next several years. I don't know how far out they looked, but I only recently looked at it, and almost none of this stuff was done. None of the recommendations that were there were pursued. So when we talk about, you know, our resistance to raising fees to do this, the only other place we can go to accomplish some of these technology needs, particularly the ones that will bring us forward since we're lagging in some areas, that either has to come from the fees or it has to come from general corporate. It's just going to be one more thing in this mix of what we're talking about, you know, what things are competing for. So I think this is a good recommendation. I was just talking with Deb last week about our need to relook at this technology plan, long-term plan for the county. And I'm glad to see you saw the same thing.
Thank you. Ms. Burksen, who promises she will be brief.
It's just that we've had a succession of people coming and saying, "We're spending more than we're taking in. Therefore, you'll have to give us more taxes to take in so we can be more efficient." Nobody has suggested spending less or really being more efficient.
That's perhaps a good note on which to close the discussion of fees. Mr. DeLashman, appreciate you being here, as well as the elected officials. I think, I hope that a fringe benefit that came out of this study is that, you know, people in these offices may now be thinking about how to improve things slightly within their own office. So probably often, it does do good just to have somebody from the outside take a look. So I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the elected officials working with this group and helping us identify ways that we can both potentially identify new fees, revenue, and control costs.
Great. It's our pleasure. Thank you.
At this point, we are through item A of finance, and I think it's time to take a break.
Ten minutes.
Welcome back, everybody. We're going on to item B, approval of a supplier contract for the Champaign County Electricity Aggregation Program. I would entertain a motion to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Esri. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Ms. Petrie.
What is the ending date for this new one? Because the last one was very short. What?
Deb, I'm not sure I quite understood. The ending date of the rebid rate?
Yeah, right. Is that a year?
How long would the term be?
Thanks, Andrew.
The current term ends June 2014. The current contract ends June 2014.
When would the new...
I can't hear you, Andrew. Say that again. I apologize. The current contract ends June 2014 for the municipal aggregation or electric aggregation.
And when would the new one end?
Yet to be determined. That would be determined with the upcoming bid.
So why are we doing this before the...
So Good Energy, the consultant that the county hired to assist with electric aggregation, they've been doing studies and analyzing electric rates. They project that September is going to be the best time to purchase electricity in the coming months prior to the end of our contract. So they're looking at this and thinking that September is going to be the best timeframe. And that's why it's before you tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Carter.
Okay. I see you're talking about for the county. Will Champaign, Abana be able to participate in this?
That's up to the city councils. This is for the unincorporated areas of the county.
Mr. Kurtz.
Due to a conflict of interest, I'm in the energy business on the side, and I will not be able to vote on this issue.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, those of us who can vote on this issue, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. We'll forward that. Thank you, sir. Sorry you had to wait all that time for that. Next, moving on to the treasurer. We've got monthly reports again for two months because we didn't have a committee meeting last month.
Yeah, that's right. Two months are posted to my website. In June, I added a report that I want you to be aware of. It's a, it details the county's debt service schedule. We have 10 debt services that we're presently paying on. If you look at that report, it'll show you each of the 10, when the next payment will be due, the amount of the payment. The balance today is a little over $65 million. So just for an informational thing that you might want to be, for those of you who are interested, go and look at that report. It'll be on there on a monthly basis. Two other things, real estate collections. We're about 59% collected, a little ahead of where we have been in the past. That 59%, as I've told you in the past, 1% represents about $3 million. So it also tells me that for the first installments that were due back on June 3, we've collected 96% of those to date. And the second, not due till September 3, we've collected 24% of those. Finally, for the monthly report, I want to let you know that on July 23, we got 68 decisions from the Department of Revenue about presence, previously Provena, properties, about exemption decisions for the year of 2010. And that will result in us giving them a refund of $1,226,000. The county's portion of that is $2,2800. If you remember, Provena's kept for its presence, I should say. 97% of the funds go into one TIF district, one tax, income, and finance district. So that's a City of Urbana issue. And as soon as the City of Urbana gives me that money, $1,188,000, then I'll be making that refund. I've got till September 20 to do that without interest. I've been in contact with the City of Urbana, so they've asked for time to study, and they certainly have the time. And so as long as we get the refund out by September 20, everything will be fine. So if there are any other questions about monthly report, if not, just ask that it be accepted and placed on file, please.
Mr. Jay and Mr. Mitchell. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Ms. Petrie, I'm sorry, did you have a comment on the report?
I just have a question to ask him. We have 10 debt services. Do you have any concerns about those? Are you refinancing them, anything to help the county, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
We have over time. We have an underwriter who helps us with that. And whenever they believe it's time for us to look at refunding bonds, which is the same as refinancing, we do that. We've done that several times, so I have no concerns at all.
Thank you. We have a number of items from the treasurer, resolutions authorizing cancellations of certificate of purchase and execution of deed of conveyance for real estate. Without objection, I would ask that we take those in omnibus fashion for items C1 through C12. I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Kurtz and... I'm sorry? C2 through C3. I apologize. Mr. Kurtz and I think Mr. Harkie, were you a seconder? Okay. Thank you. Are there any, would you like to say anything about these, or are we...
I would, only that the first one's different than the other 11. First one is, all these are properties that went to a tax sale. They were not purchased by a tax buyer. In the case of the numbers 2 through 12, the redemption period had ended and it went to a sealed bid auction, and that's the disposition of those properties. Number one is different in that it had gone to a tax sale. No tax buyer purchased it, but the redemption period had not expired, and the taxpayer decided to redeem. So they paid $37,000 upfront. They're back to square one. So that's the only difference between, and the last two of the 12 are actually mobile homes versus the nine before that, which are real estate. And I also might add that there's only of these 12 that tend to be real estate, there's only two structures. One has EPA problems in Arantul, and one is a, I don't remember, Fisher possibly, that has actually building. The rest of them are usually what they are, are vacant lots.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, do you have a comment?
Yeah. I just want to know, is against the law for the board members to participate in the bidding procedure?
It is not. It is not. You could be a tax buyer.
It's not?
You could be one if you wish.
Okay.
We'd love to have you.
Social Security.
I'm not sure why you'd want to do that, but if you've got the time, we've got the money.
Well, you know, we get hit with so many regulations, and I'm asking the question. I want to be right.
It's a good question. All those in favor of sending this to the full board with a recommendation for approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. We'll do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So move along to the auditor. Again, we have two sets of monthly reports. I would entertain a motion that those be accepted and placed on file. Mr. Esri and, sorry, Mr. Jay.
Anybody have any questions on those? I also gave you your, for your information, the purchases not following policy, nothing really remarkable on there either. So I would just ask that you accept those two reports and put those on file, and if you have any further questions on the not following policy, I can answer those.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Just one quick question. When someone makes a purchase without a purchase order and it violates the rules, if we don't approve that purchase, what happens?
Well...
In your understanding?
In this case, it's an elected official's office, so they don't have to follow your policy. So the bill has already been paid. So there's the first answer to that. Number two, I did contact the coroner and ask him, "Why didn't you do the paperwork on a purchase order?" He really didn't have a good answer for that, but he did get multiple bids. This was grant money from Carl specifically for this, at this amount. Everything was on the up and up, so I did check into that. But I reminded him, "Well, just do the paperwork next time, and then we won't have this issue."
I do appreciate that he got that freezer without us having to allocate additional funds for it, but I want him to understand that it doesn't mean he can't...
I believe it's already installed, in fact.
He doesn't have to follow the procedures.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Although, in fact, he does not. All those in favor, Ms. Petrie.
I'm, again, I appreciate that the list of expenditures paid in 2013 is getting shorter and shorter. Makes it easier to study it and wonder about things. The dates on these five items are astonishingly old. Why is this happening?
Well, let's use, for example, the very last one there for the election assistance. That's...
Yeah, that's almost a year.
Right. And the state finally paid the grant money, so they had the grant money to pay that part. So you run into that. And then with evaluations, a lot of times, for example, the client evaluation there, we run into, I've seen this several times, where some of these smaller firms don't bill for almost a year. It's not a practice I'd like to have personally, but it's the way they run their business, and we do owe them for the service they provided.
Ms. Michaels.
I want to ask a question if Mr. Holton could expand on the reimbursement of the salary, just to clear our brains a little.
That is a reimbursement for the programmer analyst position that we had talked about with you numerous times that the county IT department ended up hiring, which has an enormous amount of responsibility for the county clerk's office. We pledged to you at the time that we were going to continue to try and find grant opportunities to reimburse the county general corporate fund for her salary. We located an $8,600 grant last year through the State Board of Elections to reimburse us for her programming services on our voter registration system. So we transferred that over to the county general corporate IT fund.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments or questions, all those in favor accepting the treasurer's report, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Whatever you are. The auditor's report. Thank you. While we're on the auditor, we have a request for creation of a full-time accountant position, which I guess is actually conversion of a part-time accountant position to a full-time accountant position and a corresponding budget amendment. So I would like to entertain a motion to forward the request for creation of a position to the full board with a recommendation for approval. to the full board with a recommendation for approval, moved by Mr. Mitchell, seconded by Mr. Esri. Would you like to speak to that, sir?
Sure. This is a position that's currently in my office, is a part-time position. The workload is such that we believe that we can keep this person working as a full-time employee of the office. In relation to the second item that is attached to this, the amount that we're asking for, the $44,75, would cover the salary for basically 90 days, which would be from when she could start as a full-time employee after your full board meeting later this month through the end of the fiscal year. For future years, the difference in salary between a part-time employee and a full-time employee is roughly $14,000 difference. We have seen a significant increase in the amount of accounts payable that we go through, mostly related to grant-funded projects and programs, such as the Workforce Initiative, which has been rather labor-intensive for our office. And as a result, we've seen an increase in the need for our accounts, in the accounts payable area. So I'm asking that we, that you would allow us to make this person a full-time employee, and it wouldn't change her hourly rate. She'd still be paid at the same hourly rate that she makes at the current, or that position earns at the current part-time position. We would be eliminating the part-time position, so we would not have an additional full person. This is eliminating the part-time and making them full-time.
If memory serves us, as an individual who you are specifically interested in keeping, based on her skills...
Absolutely. This person is already trained and is a valuable member of our team, and so we can just seamlessly move into having a full-time employee without having to go through the process of training someone that can take weeks, if not months, to do it the right way.
Thank you. Ms. Petrie.
I just want to double check. I asked this when you came before us with this item, and that is, you've explained to us that some of the need for this person, increasing their hours, is due to what RPC has enveloped.
Correct.
And my question to you previously is, is RPC going to help defer some of this extra salary?
Sure. Let me, let me explain. In the Auditor's office, there are a small number of funds that we are allowed to bill for our services. We do not bill General Corporate. That's a General Corporate, Sheriff, things like that. Those are core county functions, and so that's paid for with tax dollars. Regional Planning Commission, Nursing Home, Highway Department Fund, those areas, we are allowed to charge for the services of the Auditor's office. When we see an increase in the accounts payable transactions in those offices, we can adjust our fees accordingly. And so we will bill them accordingly for the increase that we've seen with their different programs.
Thank you.
Mr. Quisenberry.
So, quick question. Are these, are these employees, they're under a negotiated labor situation, right?
No.
They are not?
These are non-bargaining, yeah.
Professional? So they're salaried, and so if, if the amount of workload goes up and they work, you know, 45 hours this week, we don't pay them more than if they worked 38 hours last week?
They're 37 and a half hour employees, and then they can earn comp time as necessary.
Because I was going to ask you, you know, do you have overtime documentation to show that the workload's gone up?
I can, I can show you...
But if they're exempt, you don't have that, do you?
I can show you comp time accumulated by other employees in the office.
Okay. Is that significant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Astronomical is the word I would use.
Ms. Schwartz.
If it's going to be compensated from RPC, why is it coming from fund balance? I thought you said that it will be charged to...
We, we can charge, at the end of the year, our revenue that comes into General Corporate Fund is, once a year, we send out billings to those various funds, and they pay us, which is then deposited in General Corporate.
Based on the number of transactions. Okay, so it's not currently going to be covered, but eventually it will?
It'll be covered because RPC pays General Corporate every year for accounting services, and that revenue, that revenue is based on the number of transactions. So we have seen that bill to RPC and revenue to General Corp increase as their transactions have increased.
So it will be covered, we just don't see it in the budget amendment?
Right.
Thank you. If there are no additional comments or questions, all those in favor of creating the full-time accountant position, sending this to the full board, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll now take up the budget amendment, 13-41, increased appropriations of $4,475 to cover the cost of that conversion for the remainder of the fiscal year, and I would ask for a motion to send that to the full board with a recommendation for approval, Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Carter. Are there any, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Now move on to the monthly nursing home report. We've got a report from Scott that was sent to us. We've got a couple of memos from Mr. Maxwell, and we have Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell here to answer questions about the nursing home, as usual. Would either of you like to make a statement? Did I call you Mr. Hartke? Did I call you Mr. Hartke? Mr. Quisenberry?
Reading through the report on the, on the strategic plan, and I believe in one of the sections of the strengths, weaknesses, et cetera, there were a few acronyms in there that weren't, weren't spelled out. I think one of them was DON?
Director of Nursing.
Director of Nursing, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kurtz.
Recently in the newspaper, though, I had a concern. The paper reported some deficiencies in inspections and compared us to a number of other facilities in Champaign. Having experience with food service inspectors in my former business, I pulled all of the records for the last two years of all nursing homes in Champaign County that were recently inspected, including our nursing home. I asked Mr. Scott Gima, and we sat down yesterday for about an hour, and we went over each individual items on the inspection list. And we found ways, I'm hopeful that we can raise our score by not repeating critical violations that have taken place over a period of time, which pumps the percentage of deductions for the points in these inspections. He's very cooperative. We've already made some, he already has some. In fact, in the nursing home board last night, money was acquired for new equipment for food service to address some of these initial critical violations. And I'm hopeful that the next inspection will give us a much higher rating. But they're working on the individual issues and the human errors that have taken place, which happens in every nursing home. We're a public nursing home, so we're under scrutiny all the time. And so when, when something happens at our nursing home, it becomes public knowledge. When it happens in a private nursing home, it does not. So it's hard to make those comparisons, but we're working on improving those inspection reports in the future.
Ms. Petrie.
I want to bring this out so it's on the public record. I do attend a large majority of these board meetings, and my greatest concern is that basically 99% of the time at the board meetings and all of our reports, the focus is on finances. And that is indeed very important, but to me, the elephant in the room of the nursing home has to do with the nursing home environment, the work environment, stepping back and asking ourselves, why is it that we're having such a hard time filling all of the vacancies at the nursing home? And I really encourage the nursing home board of directors and our two county board liaisons to the nursing home board to work toward getting that kind of discussion on the agenda at the board meetings, because I have, I felt very strongly for a long time that the finances would start taking care of themselves once the reputation of the nursing home improves, the census will increase, the finances will get better, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd really like to see some refocus at the nursing home.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. There are no additional comments. I'd like to thank Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell for their continued flow of information. I'm sorry, Mr. Carter.
Yeah. You know, I think it would be beneficial if the committee would report to this board, because I read that, and I appreciate you saying it to me, but a lot of that stuff could have been, you know, I think it could have been solved if they had come to the board and reported what's, we don't know what's going on until it gets solved. And to me, that don't make any sense. We need more hands on what's happening to that nursing home.
My concern...
We never know until it's really in trouble, and that's, you know, that don't make no sense. It makes us look bad, really.
Mr. Carter, I'm sure you'd be welcome, I'm sure you're welcome to attend the nursing home board meetings. I mean, the more county board members that want to get involved, I think the better. I mean, as Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell are there, because they're on the board, and Ms. Petrie attends, I generally don't, because I'm usually busy on those nights, but I think any, if you want to go there and see for yourself what they're doing, I would certainly encourage it.
Yeah, I'm saying, but I had, I had training for, you know, food handling. I had that training. But you don't know, you know, you can't have any input if they don't come and, and let us know what's going on until it's, then got rotten. To me, that, you know, we should know beforehand.
Thank you for your comment. There's no other comments or questions. I had asked that, I had asked for a motion that we accept the nursing home report and place it on file, Mr. James and Mr. Richards. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, we'll accept that. Moving on to budget amendments and transfers. Next item is item F1, budget amendment 13-40. This is for $61,523 from the mental health board's fund balance for expenses on addressing identified community needs, including expansion of programs and services for people with mental illness and substance abuse disorders who are also involved with the criminal justice system. And these funds are coming from the community mental health fund balance. Motion by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. McGuire. Questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Esri.
Just, just one real quick. A question, I guess, who's actually overseeing the funds? I mean, do we know any, I mean...
This would be the mental health board.
It is, and just, just projects that they've, okay.
Yeah, this is their, this, this is money that comes out of the mental health board tax, mental health board tax levy, and they're the ones who write her down.
They're doing direct things with it.
They're the ones who write her down, yeah. Seeing no additional comments or questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Next up is budget amendment F2. This is 13-42. This is for $179,000. This is from the Court Complex Construction Fund balance for repair of the courthouse masonry brickwork, as we discussed earlier in County Board Resolution 8499. Moved by Mr. Langenheim, seconded by Mr. Mitchell. The comments or discussion, Mr. Richards.
I do have one question. I know we've talked about this several times before, and every time, it's been the same on the masonry, but this seems to be, the appropriation seems to be going to the furnishings and office equipment line. I was, just wanted to make sure it's actually going to masonry, and this is a more expansive than office chairs line.
Is it the capital lines that is appropriated there, and once we get the stairs back and our access hanging out specifically, it will both come to the number one?
Ms. Carter.
Okay. Was this $179,000 the total price of what it costs to complete the masonry?
I have no idea. I'm going to ask Mr. James if he can weigh in on this.
I would give you my best estimate, until you know that will not be the total price.
What?
That's right.
I think Ms. Bucy wants to weigh in.
Actually, the entire project budget, based on what's been presented to facilities, is right at about $304,000. There was already $125,000 appropriated in this year's budget for this project, so this is to appropriate the balance that we now know we need, because we have all the information about the project.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely, sir.
Damn. My God. What, what happened?
The money.
You know, wait a minute. We just, was that Russler that put that in there? Contract, contract?
No. And this, this has all been discussed at facilities, but this is basically 10-year brick and mortar type of expansion joint maintenance that needs to be done on this building to ensure that it doesn't deteriorate, and we don't in the future have problems with water and things like that, which we have had in the past when we didn't do this type of maintenance.
Well, what, it got water in it, or what?
This was, this was scheduled. I mean, we, we knew from the beginning that this building should be expected to have exterior maintenance done on it by the time it was 10 years old, and this just reflects the actual work that needs to be done.
Well, this is ridiculous, really. The courthouse is not that old, and every time we turn around, they're getting maintenance, the tile bill, and, and I was right here, a lot of that stuff was in that first contract. And I'm going to just tell the truth. When we got that footage from here, things went sour. I'm going to tell you. And I don't know how all that stuff was opted out of that contract.
I believe Mr. Langenheim's next. Mr. Langenheim passes, Ms., excuse me.
Schwartz.
Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you. I'm on the facilities committee, and I've seen the pictures of the crack and so on. I was duly impressed. My concern is that there are more buildings in the criminal justice system. We haven't seen the cracks there. There are quite a few other cracks and many other issues. And given a limited budget, I understand this is currently sitting in the courthouse fund, but I view that it's coming in general more from the criminal justice. I don't see any reason to spend $300,000 on some very impressive cracks, but without looking at what the real needs of the criminal justice system, we know we will have other issues to deal with, we know we don't have the money for that, and I think it's premature without looking at the total needs of the system, or at least a little bit more expanded than just the cracks of the courthouse to spend $300,000. So I will vote against it. Thank you.
Mr., Ms. Petrie, you first. I think it was you, and then Mr. James.
I guess my response to that would, would be that, you know, we all got to keep in mind that buildings are going to need regular maintenance on an ongoing basis. We have several buildings, as Rachel just said, that, that have needs. We're doing the best we can with what we can. I don't like the cost any more than anybody else in this room, but it is what it is. If we don't do it, and we keep prolonging things, we've seen the old nursing home, we've seen other issues that have come up. We need to have a plan. I keep stressing, we got to have a plan. I don't care if a building's two years old. I've bought a new car, and a year later, somebody hits me, and I'm putting thousands of dollars in it. I mean, there are always things that come up, whether it be weather-related, ground-shifting, what have you, or just poor workmanship to begin with. But to delay it and to put it off because you don't agree with it, all we're doing is kicking that can down the road, and in the end, we're never going to get a handle on what we need to get a handle on. And I agree, there's always something else that needs attention, but it's like raising a kid. You attend to the matter at hand, and then you hope the rest of the stuff will fall into place.
Ms. Petrie.
I've, I've attended the facilities meeting and expressed my concerns about this. I cannot support this work, and the foundational reason is, I am not convinced that they have solved the reason for this happening. And I foresee five years down the line, the next board in place at that time is going to be spending some more money. And what bothers me the worst of this is that expansion joints are suggested for the new brick facade on the old part of the courthouse. And in addition, there are expansion joints in that new addition, and they need work. So the factor of putting expansion joints as the solution on the facade of the old courthouse I think we really need to know the reason why this is happening. So I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Langenheim?
I would just like to call the board's attention to the condition of the downtown jail. Maintenance of masonry walls is necessary, and we in the past have not done that. It's, it's something you can always kick under the table. Do it or pay twice as much two years from now or three years from now.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Mr. James?
In response to Patsy, I guess I would just say there's, there's many roads that I travel on, you travel on. I see the state and people that are well-versed in engineering and what have you, like our Mr. Maxwell here. But there's numerous factors that come into play, and they're replacing those roads always and doing work on them. When you take that attitude that you don't understand in five years isn't, we're gonna be doing it again. Well, we may be doing it again. But the point is, it's there now. If we do nothing about it, as Quiz and Barry said at our meeting, we're gonna end up with a lot worse. I mean, we really are, and we need to do the work that needs to be done. And I just hope that this board supports that. I, for one, as everybody knows, I vote no on a lot of issues, but in this case, we need to move on it.
Hold on, hold on, Lord. I think, uh, Mr.-
Okay. Look, I'm not saying don't fix it. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Carter.
Go ahead.
And there is two issues here. One of them, we, we keep discussing the maintenance of the building, but as was alluded to, there's actually cracks in the walls, and they're gonna put in expansion joints. If we don't correct the issues of the cracks in the walls, the envelope of the building is, can be penetrated by moisture and rain and actually damage the building. And the building is damaged. We have to re, repair the building so there isn't greater damage to the building and greater cost that we have to pay for. It's not like we can just ignore that issue. It's not, you know, just an issue of maintenance.
No, Mr. Carter. Sorry.
Yeah. Mr. James, I'm not saying don't fix it, but look, man, I do holidays and I don't never go back. So if something wrong, it either mismanagement or the engineer is missing something, but this, look, you're gonna be broke if you got to go back every five years. The maintenance of building, that shouldn't have been done properly right in the fireplace. There's something wrong here.
I agree.
Well, and the taxpayers is getting mad as heck because we setting up here not letting the engineer get away with not doing his job, or the contractor's not doing his job. And you know that I know and you know, these roads is being fixed, so they have to go back. If, I'm just being honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Esri?
Just real quick, comparing it to a house, though, I mean, even if it's a brick house, unless you're building a mansion, you're talking, this is just throwing out numbers, 20 feet of brick that expands and contracts compared to 200 feet that expands and contracts over a cro, and up and down. You get a lot more expansion and contraction in a bigger wall of brick and stone than you do on a house. It's a fact of life. The stuff moves.
Mr. Mitchell?
Just, just a real simple, short answer is low bidder is, is the answer to this. So, I mean, you know, that's one of the things we're saddled with, but I think that's one of the things you have to look at into the future.
They don't build them like they used to. At least not for us. Uh, Mr. Maxwell?
Well, I, maybe I can add some confusion to this. We actually have two separate issues. We've got the, the tenure addition that's, uh, we're, we're proposing to do the expand, uh, to remove the old expansion joints and replace them and reseal around the windows and the doors. Um, I would have liked to seen that last a little longer, perhaps another three or four years. Um, perhaps as long as 20. But the fact is, we're also going to do repair on the older portion. It's a very cost-effective way to do both of them at the same time. Um, and I will say, it's usually cheaper to do preventive maintenance. And I think Jeff Blue's proving that to you with the studies that he's doing on highways. And, uh, and it's, uh, than, than it is to do remedial repair. So I, I, I don't like having to do this at 10 years, but I believe, uh, perhaps the building's moved as much as it will. And, uh, we may not have to do this again for several, more than 10 years, may have, hopefully 20. It's something we've got to keep, keep doing because water, water will go in. And water is the universal solvent. Um, the other thing has to do with the, uh, extension, not extension, but the, uh, work that we did about five years ago on the old section. And that shows the fact that the crack, we do have cracks now that's, that are letting water in. That old section is 111 years old. Correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, but somewhere in that vicinity. It's a steel structure. It has a masonry backing, maybe a plaster backing, but, and then it has face brick. Those face brick over the years have opened up and have admitted water. And, uh, as a result of the type of construction, once that backing got wet, uh, it could still be settling. And that could be part of our problem. We definitely need to get in there and seal those cracks up. Experts will disagree. Engineers will disagree. We're not perfect, less than perfect by any means. But, um, we've hired our expert. And that's what we have. We have an expert and we have him on our payroll to do this work. So I believe we need to go ahead and do this, seal up in the future. Maybe our only alternative would be to close up the cracks, the expansion joints. Maybe the cheapest way in the future ever periodically, every four or five years is go in and, and reseal, uh, tuck point those cracks that open up and not do much additional remedial work on this old section. But we will have to keep that moisture out of that old section the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Uh, is there any additional comments or questions? I would ask all those in favor of sending Budget Amendment 13-42 to the full board with a recommendation for approval to say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no?
No.
I'll declare that passed, but it will not go on consent. Uh, moving on to item G1. This is for the Children's Advocacy Center. I would ask for a motion to request approval of application and if awarded acceptance of this ongoing grant from the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. Mr., Ms. Court and Mr. Jay, um, is there any discussion about this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I'd like to mention, I guess I got email from Mr. Kurtz with regard to the Children's Advocacy Center the other day, forwarded from Ms. Amay, I believe her name is, who's the executive director, uh, who indicated that, um, most of the board members have probably seen this, but, uh, as a result of the Penn State, uh, football settlement regarding Mr. Sandusky, uh, there's about $188,000 that had to be given to, or there was a fund to which, uh, they had to contribute, of which about $188,000 was gonna be given to each Big Ten city. And, uh, in, uh, champagne that was split four ways by the United Way, uh, to Crisis Nursery, Casa Races, and to the CAC. So we're pleased to see them and those other very valuable organizations get that money. So congratulations on getting that. At least one good thing has come out of that, that disaster. Um, let's move on to the county administrators' report. We have a general corporate fund budget report and budget change report.
The July report is at your desks. On the revenue side, I, I would simply point out that we are still continuing to trend with, um, better than budgeted revenues for non-business license and permits, which is basically real estate transactions. The corporal, corporate personal property replacement tax, uh, recently the state posted what their fiscal 2014 budget will produce in that for us, and it is better than what we had budgeted. The sales taxes are coming in fairly close to where projected. The one cent is actually coming in at a better rate of improvement over last year's revenues than the quarter cent, but fairly close to targets. Um, the income taxes also coming in better than originally projected. And then when you get down to the bottom third of the page, our fees and fines revenues are not coming in as were projected. So at the end of the day, right now, it looks like we should achieve 101% of our revenue for fiscal 2013. On the expenditure side, we're currently projecting underspending in just about every area except purchase document stamps, which is a required increase because of the, the real estate transactions goes along with the revenue. So right now, we're projecting to, total expenditure at 97% of the current budget, which would place us at an ending fund balance based on projections of about 15%, which is a good position. On the budget change report, which is on the back, um, just documents the changes that have occurred year-to-date. Uh, we've increased our expenditure budget by 2% since December 1st and our revenue budget by .08% since December 1st.
Motion to receive Deb's report and place it on file. Mr. Quiz and Barry and somebody over there, Mr. Richards? Mr. Richards now. Uh, any additional questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And let's talk about the legislative budget hearings.
The schedule is in your packet. We did attempt to attach some timelines to the budget presentations. Um, those are estimated. They're obviously not in stone, but as you go through those evenings of budget presentations, that's kind of what we're projecting, especially for the arrival of presenters. All of the budget materials will be provided to you at the county board meeting next Thursday evening in hard copy so that you have them a couple days before the budget hearings are actually held.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, let's move on to the memo from the county facilities committee regarding funding of a capital improvement plan. Um, I would, for the purposes of discussion, I would entertain a motion to direct the county administrator to place this expenditure in the draft fiscal year 14 budget. Moved by Mr. Esri and seconded by Mr. Quiz and Barry. Deb, do you want to take this, or Mr. James? Either of you?
This is a, a second stage of, uh, moving towards develop, developing a capital improvement plan for our facilities that has been done this year by our facilities director and then establishing a budget plan for those initiatives. Um, for the, the spreadsheet is in the packet that starts on page 129 that lists all of the items that have been identified. Um, the memo explains that if we truly amortize these as we should at the time that they're installed for the number of years till they're replaced, our total annual cost for all of these equipment items would be $318,000 a year from the general corporate fund. However, because we have never done that, if we were to amortize the cost and fully fund the plan for all of these items beginning in fiscal 2014, that would require a new expenditure of $2.3 million. Obviously, we can't afford that. Um, if we funded only all the items that are overdue for replacement in fiscal 2014, that would be a total cost of $1.6 million, which, again, I don't believe the general corporate fund can afford in one year. So what was done is a determination of the top five priority items, um, to be replaced. And I can tell you that the number one item had another failure just this week. So right now, the chiller for POD 300, which has four compressors, has only one. Um, so that is how we came up with the recommendation to add $436,200 to focus on these, um, items for replacement to get started with being more responsible about replacing equipment in a timely manner in our facilities. That would bring the total new appropriation, we did roofs earlier this year, for roofs and equipment, new appropriation in general corporate and fiscal 2014 of $750,000. I would point out to you that you will look at this in the context of the entire general corporate budget in September. And at that time, if you decide to change your mind, you can change your mind. But the recommendation from facilities is that this is the bare bones necessity that we should be budgeting to take care of our buildings.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in right now and mention that this is not the only one of these we're gonna see. I'm pretty sure we're gonna see one from the highway department to replenish the, uh, federal matching fund, or federal matching funds fund, whatever it's called, federal aid matching fund, fund. Uh, we may well see others. Uh, we know we're gonna see an increase in health insurance premiums, and I believe we're gonna have recommendations from the, from ILPP. We already have recommendations from the Community Justice Task Force. So there're gonna be a lot of competing demands on what's gonna be a relatively minor increase in revenues for the next year. So, uh, the county administrators' preference, I think, on this is that we put all these requests into the budget and see how it stacks up. And I don't think they're all gonna survive, or at least certainly not survive intact. But, uh, I would say it's probably a reasonable idea to put all these in there and see how they stack up. Uh, that being said, anybody, I'm not sure everybody is gonna agree. Mr. Richards?
Glad to see that the facilities committee is being proactive about doing a capital plan. But before we put this into the budget, I just want to point out again that there's a state program, Illinois Energy Now, that pays 75 cents on the dollar for water heaters and chillers, which is what we are wanting to buy next year. Uh, we've spent most of the last year talking about how we need to be more aggressive. Now, the grant funding does run out, but before we put this in the budget, I think we need a serious, say, $300,000 worth of effort into trying to get this funding that's out there so we can drop that item. Maybe even do more this year.
Sounds good to me. Mr. James?
Mr. Richards, I would just state that any grant that we can get, we're trying to get, and we've been very proactive on it. Uh, if we're not gonna do a project, then we can't really go after a grant on a promise that we're gonna do it unless they allow that. We were very, very in tune to that. We're also looking at many new green initiatives as where we can. So to that question, yes. And I just wanted to state also, when this was discussed, for Patsy's sake, because we did state that even though this is our list, if an emergency arises and something is on that list that can be pushed back a little bit and we need to take care of that emergency, we, we, or the county would have the say-so to reallocate those funds to take care of that emergency. Just remember, when we do these, these are budget items. They are not something that's totally set in stone. But as everybody in this room knows, our buildings aren't getting any younger. And if we don't start doing something, you're gonna be sitting here every year trying to come up with funds.
Great. Happy to hear that. I had a question for you along those lines, Mr. James. Since these, since this is a, you know, significant amount of money, uh, what do you envision the timing being if things go according to plan? When would you envision doing this throughout the year? Are you, you do all these immediately, or are these expenses gonna be spread out throughout the year?
They would probably be spread out as we could. And, and as everybody knows, we're gonna be getting the new facilities person, uh, director, superintendent, whatever you wanna call him on board, hopefully before or around December. Uh, but u, usually what I do when I do a budget, uh, I try to spread it out in the spring and the fall because in the summertime, most contractors and, and construction workers are really, really spare thin. And I don't, I don't know of too many of us in this room that really would like to be outside on a 100-degree day hammering a, a jack or something like that. So when I look at that, I try to plan that out that way and also to disrupt staff in the least amount of time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other comments or questions on this issue? Uh, seeing none. All those in favor of directing this, will not go to the full board. This is a direction to the county administrator to include this expenditure in the budget. And then, of course, we'll see it in September and October and November. Uh, all those in favor of directing the county administrator to do that, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Deb. Uh, we have one more item, uh, from the addendum for the first part of the finance agenda tonight. This is, um, on your addendum, it's a grant from the emergency management, or grant for the emergency management agency. This is something they've applied for and gotten every year. It's about 50, it's about $50,000 and it covers about half the cost of the EMA activities. And Mr. Kurtz has made a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Jay, any discussion questions? A reminder, everyone, this is now under the sheriff's department. We've designated the sheriff's office as the emergency management agency. Uh, seeing no additional comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. I had a very, very brief chair's report. As I mentioned before, we're expecting to see a pretty significant increase in our health insurance premiums, as we do most years, which will affect the budget. I just wanted to thank everybody- I just wanted to thank everybody who's involved with the Health Insurance Committee. As you remember, this is something that we created a couple of years ago. This is a collaborative effort between management and labor. The representatives of all the bargaining units on the Health Insurance Committee, some of whom have been coming in on their days off to meet with us, and I felt that the meetings have been very productive. I think we're, we're getting a lot of creative suggestions as far as how we can, you know, look at the competitive plans, tweak the plans, and how we may be able to save some money for the county going forward. So I just wanted to thank both management and labor who were involved in that. And with that, I will turn the chair over to Ms. Burksen. I'm gonna do it at the end, actually, 'cause I've gotta, I'm gonna have to come back.
Can we get a motion to receive these reports and put them on file? Yeah.
Madam Chair, I just wanna encourage you, amongst several others from the Democratic Caucus, to, that I think it would be helpful if you get some of these people in in the coming months to, to start to do their annual and quarterly reports again.
Well, I was really thinking semi-annual reports, there are six of them, we'd get one per meeting, which is enough.
Right.
And aside from that, chairs report, leave some money in the kitty for justice.
We have to vote?
Oh, vote. All in favor? Just leave some money in the kitty for justice, please. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Burksen. Mr. Quisenberry? Up for you.
Good evening. I think we're gonna make it out by 10:00. I shouldn't have said that, but...
If not, we'll have another break.
We'll have another break. All right. So I know this list looks a little imposing, but what I, what I'd like to do, and if the, the board would indulge me, is request an omnibus motion for the drainage districts appointments, one through, I'm gonna ask one through 30 because they are all single applicant appointments, and then when I get that motion, I will let, Mr. Esri has moved, and Mr. Harper has seconded, I will let Mr. Kurtz run down the list of districts and names, and we'll see which ones he can pronounce right.
Thank you, I'll give it a try. All right, let's get moving. Beaver Lake, Joseph Isle, Blackford Slough, Valerie Rogers, Conrad and Fisher, Richard Rayburn, Kankakee, James Boland, Kerr, and Compromise, Col Park, Lower Big Slo, Frank Eeler, Slough, sorry, South Fork, Ken, that's the New York accent, I can't help that, sorry. South Fork, Ken Decker, Number 10 Town of Ogden, Leon Bloom, Oakaw, Steve Steerwalt, Owl Creek, John Nelson, Tisodum, Slough, Dennis Butler, Prairie Creek, Arlen Burr, Ralp, Kenneth T. Schmidt, Salt Fork, James Kirk, Sangamon and Drummer, William Ziegfried, Silver Creek, Steve Mosher, St. Joseph Number 3, Michael Hastings, St. Joseph Number 6, Gary Gannon, Two Miles Slough, Jerry Hines, Union DD of Stanton and Ogden Townships, Ray Aden, St. Joseph Number 4, Francis Ostabur, Triple Fork, Cody Kundoff, Union Number 1, Philo and Crittenan, James Thinniss, Union Number 2, St. Joseph and Ogden, William Wilson, Number 25, Upper Embers River Basin, Dudley Carroll, Unit, Union DD Number 1 of Philo and Urbana, Donald Rice, Willow Branch, Mrs. Marion Wagner, Whisk, Dennis Riggs, Long Branch Mutual, Dave Menninger, and Number 3, D.D., South Homer Sidney, Kevin Weinicki.
All right, and I, and I will remind everyone, if we do something in omnibus motion like this and you feel like it needs individual consideration, just let me know, we can always, we can always adjust if, if needed. So any discussion on those 30 appointments? Yes, Ms. Petrie?
I've read them all, and I continue to be totally uninspired by the kind of information that these applicants give us. I realize they peel their shoe-in, but I do think we could get a little bit more information as to what they do, why they wanna be on there, and what are some of the plans they have for the particular drainage district.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Other discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously, and next, Number 31, which is a, it's a, it's another drainage district, Nelson Moore Fairfield, which has two terms and two applicants, and Mr. Kurtz, what's your?
Yeah, thank you. John Heiser, Term 9/1, 2013 to 8/31, 2014, and David Bright, Term 9/1 to 13, 8/31 to 16.
All right, do we have a second? Mr. Esri? All right, any discussion on this specific one? Ms. Coward?
I'd like to know why there's a two-year difference.
We're correcting the cycle on this board. We've been moving forward on all the different boards to make sure the cycle of reappointments are correct. This one is one of those that we're correcting at this point.
All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. That also carried. Next item, an appointment for Fountainhead vacancy for a term of September 1st, 2013 through August 31st, 2016. Mr. Kurtz, your nomination?
Thank you. My nomination is Mr. Mark Shaw. Thank you.
Mr. Jay, seconded? All right, do we have discussion on this item? Ms. Petrie?
Yes, I, I have several points of information that I do want to get out for everybody to seriously consider. This particular drainage district happens to be in District 6, Mr. Harkey and myself, so we have a, a pertinent interest in what is happening with this drainage district. Second, this drainage district is one of the larger drainage districts, and as you learn from the citizen participation comments, most of the drainage district is now urban and not rural any, any longer. And it, and as most of you know, I've been working very hard on the flooding issues along the John Street watershed, East Washington and West Washington, so I'm quite acquainted with the issues and related to the flooding in West Washington and the issues and problems that they have run into trying to get that solved, and it goes, and West Washington goes into the Copper Slough. And there is a master plan for the Copper Slough, if any of you wanna look it up and see what the plans are. It's a 2007 plan to handle the Copper Slough. It seems that the time has come and it is more appropriate for us as a county board to start working together better between the urban and rural on the stormwater management and the flooding issues that happen, both in the urban area and in the rural area. And this is an opportunity for us to take that step forward by appointing a urban member, and Mr. Shaw is not an urban member, he is a rural member, and that board is totally rural members. And last year, when we had the issue before us of appointing to this drainage district, I did raise this very issue, and a then-county board member said to me, "Well, how in the world could an urban person understand and solve the rural issues?" And to me, you turn that question around, and why is it that three rural people can understand the flooding issues in the urban area? And I do know what the City of Champaign did in relationship to another drainage district that there was no willingness to collaborate, and the City of Champaign moved that drainage district through referendum to an elected drainage district, and now everybody on that drainage district is urban, and that, to me, negates everything that we have been trying to accomplish with the solving of the flooding and collaboration and so forth and so on. And this is secondary knowledge, since I was not at the meeting, but I do know about collaboration that has been put on the table and did not come to fruition, it was put on the table again recently, and Champaign said they would move forward on this kind of collaboration. So it seems to me that it is, the time has come for us to build a bridge between the rural and urban and not support Mr. Shaw, and another nomination come forward, and that being somebody from the urban area. Thank you.
All right, let me give you a little background. As of this morning, things have changed, things are moving forward. I have studied the Fountainhead Drainage District appointment. I've sent out some pictures to all of you. There's nobody more in empathy of flooding than I am. My business was flooded for many years, working with the Beaumont Yard Creek Commission. My home's been flooded twice, so I understand what it takes and how serious that is. So I've studied the Fountainhead Drainage District appointment very carefully. I wanna provide you with the following update background information. I spoke with Burns and Clancy, Mr. Wathler, who's worked on the Drainage District projects for many years with this Drainage District. I talked to Mr. Cutrell, who is the Drainage District's Attorney of Record. I've met with the representatives of the City of Champaign, Councilmember Marcy Dodds, Public Works Director Dennis Schmidt, and Jim Creighton, who was here today in public participation. I've also conducted extensive interviews with both candidates for this appointment, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Houston. I've researched this issue going back a number of years. My philosophy is that it is not our responsibility to micromanage or interfere in the issues that concern the district and the city. And at this time, the district and has been engaged in extended negotiations with the City of Champaign regarding drainage issues, priorities, and detachment. It is, both applicants have demonstrated a knowledge of both the rural and urban issues surrounding the ongoing negotiations to detach areas between the Drainage Districts and the City of Champaign. Mr. Shaw has been a competent commissioner, and based on his accomplishment and expertise in the 12 years of service, I see no reason that he should be replaced at this time when sensitive negotiations right now, today, are ongoing with the city. Public Works Director Dennis Schmidt has told me that they have negotiated an agreement that they had in principle agreed to more than a year ago, ready to be signed by the Drainage District. This morning, I talked with Mr. Cutrell, the Attorney of Record, and Mr. Shaw, both have stated they will sign off on this attachment, detachment agreement. That will maintain and maintain the current commissioners who have worked over an extended period of time on this negotiated agreement with the city is critical to ensure this agreement is successfully executed. I do not wanna cause any disruption to the work that has been done by changing the makeup of the membership of the Drainage Districts at this time. I'll carefully watch both sides to work to the completion of this agreement that the city staff has signed off on and will support at the city council meeting. And there is an appointment of the Drainage District every year, and perhaps a transition in membership will be more appropriate in the future year if nothing takes place. However, at this time, and based on the foregoing reasons, I'm reappointing Mr. Shaw to the Fountainhead Drainage District, subject to your consent. Also understand, when detachment takes place, this Drainage District will become completely rural. By putting an urban member on this rural drainage district, if this agreement takes place, is gonna be counterproductive. So with the agreement now being considered by both entities, and both have stated that they would support it, I will ask Mr. Shaw to, to step up and, as he promised, sign off on this agreement. And that's the reason I am reappointing Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Harkey, I have you next.
Yeah, I've lived in the, this particular drainage district for almost six years, and I have had at least 12 instances where there's been six inches of water running down Fair Street, like a little stream running down Fair Street. And Patsy made the comment about how can a rural understand urban and urban understand rural, and I, I don't really buy into that either way. I mean, I grew up on a farm and I live in the city, so I like to think I have a little knowledge of both ends. To me, this isn't about whether, what the balance is of rural versus urban, this is about the performance of the board in the, of this particular drainage district in the last 10 or 12 years, or at least six that I've been living there. And I get a lot of complaints from my neighbors about this drainage area. I mean, Patsy's worked on that John Street watershed since I first met her at least 10 years ago. West Washington is virtually the same issues and the same kind of seriousness. I'm gonna vote against this appointment because I think we need a new voice on this drainage district. I think we need somebody who, not at the last minute, under threat of losing their appointment, finally agrees to cooperate with the city, or whatever we wanna characterize this new event as. I want somebody who's been looking at these issues all along. I want somebody that, you know, understands what's going on in our neighborhood, as well as what's going on outside of the city. And, you know, again, it comes down to performance. This is, this is a drainage district that's not been handled correctly. There's been an awful lot of backup. You know, I've got neighbors who are constantly running their sump pumps, I've got neighbors who have basements who flood, and, and they come and talk to me. They don't know to come talk to the Drainage District, they know to come talk to me. And they also know that we appoint these Drainage District people. So constituent complaints, complaints to me, mean that we should manage these boards a little bit, and it, it seems to me that people like to throw around that term "micromanagement" an awful lot around here, but we're just doing our jobs. And secondly, maybe when these boards are failing to clean up or to clear up drainage issues, we do need to do some more management of them and put on new, more energetic members who are willing to make compromises before their, their appointment's on the line. So I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you. I have a long list, so I'm just gonna call names. I have you, Mr. Carter, on the list. You're not next. Mr. Jay, I have you on the list, but the next person is Ms. Michaels.
Well, I, I look at this, and listening to the public participation, they, the, the public participants stated that only 25% of the Drainage District was located in the area that, that is in the city. To me, Public Works has a big part of that, not saying the Drainage District doesn't, but if more of the Drainage District is located in a rural environment, that's where you're going to have more, you have to take care of more, like miles or roads or whatever. I do understand the flooding is, is an issue, and I do understand that, you know, maybe holding some board members' feet to the fire and say, "Look, this is how it goes." But at the same time, I still see the bulk of the district in a rural environment, and therefore, they really have more to take care of in that area. Not saying to discount that there isn't flooding here, but I think Public Works also has to get into that.
Thank you. Mr. Jay, you're next on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna try and be brief, and I will still, but you all need to go take a step backwards, if you would, because some of you are trying to be obstructionist, and you got to understand that Drainage Districts was never intended to drain residential areas. That is not what they were put in place for. Drainage Districts was put in place in this county to make it one of the most prominent agriculture communities anywhere in the world. And when you're in a drainage district, on my farm, I happened to have a Drainage District go through every farm I farmed, except one, unfortunately. I argued that for years, you ought to give the farmers that's putting up with the ditch a free ride, because we have to fight the ditch year-round, constantly. But that's not what the issue is about tonight. The issue tonight's about an area that at one time was farm ground, and it turned into be urban ground, and when that happens, usually what happens, the municipalities, once they take over and it becomes a, a community, will take care of that water program, issue, if there is an issue. The Drainage District's only purpose is to get the Drainage The Drainage District's only purpose is to get the drainage water from the area that it's in. Now, keep in mind, too, not everybody in Champaign County is in a Drainage District. I farmed some ground, farmed some ground. It wasn't in a Drainage District. So it's not a God-given thing that you have a right to that Drainage District, and you can't expect that Drainage District to come in and take care of a subdivision or a small area. It's about, it's about a section of ground, total. And a section of ground, if a farmer has a wet spot in a section of ground, the Drainage District don't take care of that. The farmer takes care of that. Now, the farmer does lay a tile from his hole to the Drainage District, but the Drainage District don't drain the farmer's ground, the same as he shouldn't be draining these folks' residential ground. It's not their job to do it. It's their job to provide the ditch to take the water. You have to take the water from, from the natural flow. The other thing you need to think about is, is when you cover this ground with homes, you take away your percolation, so consequently, you're increasing water. And when you increase that water, you ought to have the responsibility, or the municipality ought to have the responsibility, to get that water to the Drainage District. You're asking a Drainage District to do something they don't have the ability or the money to do, and it's not right, it's not fair, and it's a misrepresentation of the facts of what a Drainage District is supposed to be doing in this county.
Next, I have Mr. Alex.
Thank you, and thank you for that terrific introduction, Mr. Jay, because I could not agree more. The purpose of a Drainage District is not urban stormwater handling. It is unrealistic for the residents of that neighborhood, and for this, more importantly, for the City of Champaign, to expect an undercapitalized rural Drainage District to be able to solve their drainage problems. Going to the undercapitalization, I mean, I'm sad to say that one of the ways in which the Fountainhead Drainage District has attempted to raise money is by, over the years, advancing what I would charitably call a novel legal theory with regard to the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District, saying the sanitary district should pay a drainage assessment for the treated sanitary water that discharges into their ditch. Now, the case law does not appear to be particularly friendly to that argument. The sanitary district does not particularly appreciate that argument. The sanitary district did not appreciate an attempt one year to sort of slip a substantial hike in the drainage assessment for the Southwest Treatment Plant onto the books without much notice. You know, they say that revenge is a dish best served cold, and as a former president of the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District Board, it would give me great pleasure to vote against an incumbent on the board of the Fountainhead Drainage District. That being said, the proper solution in this case is detachment. The City of Champaign needs to, as they have in many cases, as other municipalities have in many cases, taken over the drainage function, which is what, and maintained their own storm drains, which is what they're good at, let the rural Drainage District maintain the farm tiles and the ditches, which is what they're good, which is what they're good at. And my understanding is that, you know, this appointment has been the catalyst to potentially finally get the Fountainhead Drainage District and the City of Champaign off their respective dimes to look at actually performing this detachment that should have been done decades ago. So, against my better judgment, to no one's surprise more than my own, I'm going to support Mr. Kurtz's appointment, based on the fact that I have heard that this board is now willing to support, in the immediate future, detachment from the City of Champaign. Now, that being said, I get to vote on this again next Thursday. So it'd be great to know what progress was made in that effort that's been going on for many, many years, but now, for whatever reason, seems willing to bear fruit, but I will support this for the time being.
All right, next, Mr. Carter.
Yes. I'd never known that the city annexed a subdivision and lead a drainage out. How can this happen? I don't even know why they even called, like Josh. Why didn't they call the city councilman? He the one that's representing. Now, they calling Josh? Come on, man, this is a trick bag, if you ever want to see one. We shouldn't, we shouldn't even be discussing that. That's been part of the city ever since I was a boy. Used to be prospect, then that later on, they annexed it. That's been part of Champaign for years. And my son was, he was the supervisor of the sewer and what you call it out there. And I don't know why they called Josh. They should have been calling the city councilman. So that's my, I don't know, I don't know why we want to get involved in those.
All right, Mr. Langenheim.
As I understand it, members of the Drainage District boards must be residents of the Drainage District. If this urban area is amputated from the district, Mr. Houston will no longer be eligible to be a member of that board.
It is true. Mr. Esri, you're next.
After Mr. Jay's comments, he put it rather well, but we'll expand on it a little bit. I mean, one thing, Mr. Hartke saying sump pumps, well, that's basically an artificial source of water to a Drainage District. That's taking groundwater and pumping it up onto the surface and saying, "Here, take care of it." Granted, this, this problem, I'm sure, has gotten worse over the years, but it's not like it's brand-new in this area. Green Street, where Mr. Kurtz's business got flooded out, it didn't get solved in a matter of a year. I mean, it took years. I'm not entirely sure how long this has been going on out there, but especially based on what Mr. Kurtz has indicated, and has been said, like by Mr. Alex, that it sounds like this is moving now, and I sure hope it has gotten to that point that it is going to move. The district, as Mr. Jay said, it was originally formed for farmland, and it's largely for surface water. It's not for groundwater that districts were put in. They drained some of the surface swales and stuff. There are district tiles out there, but they aren't that many. They, the tiles that get put in the fields to drain subsurface water, which is like a sump pump, that's largely the farmers' individuals' problems to take care of. Now, you may have a couple neighbors that go together, because there's one neighbor that wants to go across the other neighbor to get to the Drainage District to drain, but if this is moving along as it sounds like it is, as of this morning, I would agree with Mr. Kurtz. It doesn't sound like we need to change one of three captains, you could say, on one side of the field, the playing field, in mid-game and throw somebody new in there, and if the detachment occurs, then Mr., as has been said, Mr. Houston isn't even eligible, because you have to own land in that district. You don't, it's not a residence. You have to own land. So I would be in favor of Mr. Kurtz's nomination. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Burksen.
Everyone said it so well.
Okay, so did I miss anybody on the first pass? Josh, you've already spoken, so I have Mr. Kurtz next, and then I have Mr. Hartke.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Hartke's statement concerning Mr. Shaw and his feeling now, all of a sudden, he's changed his mind because he's getting reappointed. Give a little history on this, and believe me, I go back to 1998 on all of this issue. A year and a half ago, about a year and a half ago, this Drainage District and the City of Champaign had an agreement in principle, and Mr. Shaw agreed to that detachment agreement almost a year and a half ago. And the city agreed to it. The city went back and changed the initial agreement. They came back to the Drainage District and said, "No, we want to change this agreement." And that's where the loggerheads began. In discussions with all of these gentlemen and with the, I'm sorry, the City of Champaign, they're now resurrecting that original agreement that was in principle for both of these organizations, and they now support it. Miss, the, I'm sorry, let me get his name. So I have it here. Mr., I'm sorry, Dennis Schmidt, who is the Public Works Director, has told me that this agreement, which is now agreed to by the Drainage District, which was agreed to almost a year ago, is now back on the table, and that's why this morning, I was told that the Drainage District will agree to it. Okay? So, this has nothing to do with the appointment of Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw agreed to this agreement in principle more than a year ago. And now, Mr. Schmidt has stated very simply that they will support it, the staff of the City of Champaign will support this agreement when the Drainage District signs off on it, and that's what I'm hoping to see happen.
All right, thank, I have Mr. Hartke next. I have your, I'm writing you down. Mr. Hartke's next.
Couple of points. I recognize that by acreage, this is mostly a rural district, but by population, number of houses, and tax dollars, it is an urban district. Number two, any drainage that goes on in the urban area, it's all connected. What we drain out of town rolls out to the farms and the small towns and all of that, so we have to be able to work together on these things, and that's been my complaint. And I'm running just basically off of the constituent comments I've gotten on this, also a conversation with some, with a city council member, that they felt that they were not getting the cooperation. Now, this, that can be, of course, be a two-sided story, but the preponderance of reports I've had is that this has not been a cooperative Drainage District. And again, we're going on the assumption that this detachment is going to happen, which has evidently been agreed to multiple times and has then changed and then not happened, and so we're just supposed to go on this. If, if Mr. Houston would receive this appointment, and obviously, he's not, because I can count votes just as well as anybody in here, but if Mr. Houston would get this appointment and the detachment would happen, we could easily re-put a new person from the new, newly-formed rural Drainage District onto this board. Again, though, I'm going to kind of drop this, because I can count votes, but I just think that we're going on assumptions here that are not guaranteed that this detachment will happen.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Yeah. Who are Mr. Shaw representing?
Landowners in the district.
He's a appointee to the district like any other.
In behalf of who?
He's a resident.
Huh?
He, he's a landowner, resident of that district.
Well, is he on his own, or is he representing the county?
I'm not prepared to speak to his intentions, sir. I don't, I don't know them.
Huh?
I don't know his intentions, but if he lives in...
Well, then, it looks like that's his baby.
He lives in the district. He's eligible to be appointed.
Wait, wait, somebody got to be responsible for it. If we in charge of Mr. Shaw, I can see it, but Mr. Shaw don't have the right to go and negotiate something else without his boss knowing something about it before he do it.
Mr. Shaw is on the Drainage District Board.
Yeah, but he, look, what I'm saying is...
Mr. Carter, you're going to have to get to your point. What's your point about Mr. Shaw?
Well, look, man, something, something need to be clarified. If I'm working for somebody, I got to go and report back the problem that I'm fixing to get into. I don't just go and make decisions without going back to the people I'm representing.
It's a three-person board. They have regular meetings.
Well, the board got to be operated by somebody.
They are their own governing body.
Well, then, we don't have anything to do with that.
We appoint the members of it.
If you appointed, nah, that's what I'm saying. Then why didn't Mr. Shaw come back in without making a decision on his own? Right is right, man. Right is right.
Mr. Carter, he does not have to come back here.
Well, then, why we have to appoint him?
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, you're talking in circles. I'm going to move on to Mr. Jay.
Well, I'm voting no.
Just for the clarification, Mr. Shaw would have been here tonight. He lost his mother.
He's lost his mother Sunday night, and he's taking care of it.
Mr. Richards, you haven't talked yet, but I'll get to you, Mr. Esri, in a moment.
I'm going to vote no on this. I'm concerned that as many times as we've talked about detachment and it's fallen through, that the city is, as it says it's going to, follow through on a referendum to do a hostile takeover of this board, and when it's completely urban and rural residents are shut out, we are going to continue to have problems with this. I think the best solution would be if we, one, could just get them to agree, but, two, have at least one urban representative on here.
Mr. Richards, could you elaborate on the threat that you're talking about?
As there have been with other Drainage Districts, if the landowners can have a referendum to have it be elected instead of appointed by us. If so, with the overwhelming preponderance of population, that most likely, which is probably why it's attracted to the city, means it's going to be urban, urban residents. And if so, we could end up with the opposite problem, and then next year, two years, three years, we'll be hearing the opposite things, and we still won't have any resolution of this.
Thank you for elaborating. Mr. Esri.
To speak a little bit to Mr. Carter, each Drainage District, except for very, there's, I don't know how many in this county, but there's three members on the Drainage District. They're appointed by this county board, except for a select few where it's an election. To be on that Drainage Board, you have to be a landowner in that district. You can't just live there. You have to own land in that district that is served by that district. Once you're on that board, you represent everyone, every other landowner in that district, just like since we live in this county and we are on the county board, we represent all the people in the county, and especially of your district, but also of the whole county. So, all we do is make those appointments, and that's all we're trying to do tonight, and that's all we've done with all the previous ones.
I'm on the county board, I did for a while, but I never have the right to make a decision unless I bring it back to this board.
Well, they are...
You do, wait a minute, you on the board. Do you have the right to make your decision?
They're a legal entity that is recognized by the state. They have their own attorney. Every district has their own attorney, like we have our own attorneys.
Why you the state do it?
Okay.
It's a county issue.
Excuse me. Can I have some order, please? I'm going to cut this conversation short, because it's, it's not progressive.
Champaign, I have one other quick point. This isn't the Carter.
No, I'd like, I'd like to move on, Mr. Esri, please. I think I'm ready, I'm ready for to call a vote.
I'd like to have a roll call.
Do you have a second? Now, I'm going to call for a vote on whether or not we're going to have a roll call vote, which is my prerogative. All those in favor of a roll call, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Say no? Okay. All right, call the roll, please.
Jay?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Quisenberry?
No.
Richards?
No.
Rosales?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
Alex?
Yes.
Burksen?
Yes.
Carter?
Three no.
Coort?
No.
Esri?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Hartke?
No.
James?
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay, I have that the motion, the motion passed. So that will be recommended to the full board, and we'll talk about it again then. All right, next, as I wake up my iPad here, next thing we have on the agenda is an appointment to a, as an alternate to a committee, Mr. Kurtz, you want to appoint someone to the county board, alternate to the Labor and Management Health Insurance Committee.
My, my appointment is Ms. Astrid Burksen.
Seconded by Mr. McGuire.
I'm unanimous on this one.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Next, we have the county clerk's regular reports. I would entertain a motion to accept those and place them on file.
Slow move.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Rosales. Any questions about the clerks' reports for both June and July? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, now, we're into the county administrator section. I entertain a motion for the administrative services reports for June and July.
Move the recital place on file.
Mr. Alex?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mitchell. I entertain a motion for the administrative services reports for June and July. Mr. Alex? Second, Mr. Mitchell. Deb, did you have anything you want to share about those? Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Okay, now we're to the last piece of meat on this part of the agenda. We have received reports back from the Job Content Evaluation Committee recommendation, and is the feeling we want to take these one by one, or could we omnibus this and talk about them individually in an omnibus motion? Omnibus motion from Mr. Kurtz. I have a second from Ms. Schwartz. Just to run down a quick, a quick overview, the review of the auditor's position came back with no change, just a slight decrease in the points, but same category, so we have no action to necessarily take. The circuit clerk jury coordinator came back as a recommendation for a two-thirds time position. I think the details summarized pretty well. And the IT department job was brought back as a, as a new classification. I believe that's one step up from the, the current position description. And so, does anybody have any questions? I see we have the IT director here, so if you have any questions regarding that, or the circuit clerk jury coordinator. I see no questions. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay. I do not, thankfully, have a chair's report tonight. And the things that I have for consent agenda are 1 through 30, as a, as a group. A 31, not 32. Does 33 even need to go to full board? Okay, that, B was unanimous, C one, or, I'm sorry, A, B, and C were, they just come here, so they, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm not even going to get up for this one. This would be item under Section 10, item A, or A1, A and B. These are the finance ends of the Job Content Evaluation Committee recommendations that we just voted on. I would ask for a motion to send the circuit clerk jury coordinator and IT software reporting analyst positions to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Moved by Mr. Esri, and seconded by Mr. Rosales. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Thank you, and there's a memo on page, now that you've already voted, there's a report on page 191 that shows what you just voted for. Items for consent on finance are B1, C2 through 12, D2, D3, F1, but not 2, G1, and second A1, A and B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, C1, to consider the employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Champaign County. I further move that the following individuals remain present, the county administrator and the recording secretary.
Thank you. We will adjourn, I'm sorry, second, second, please. So move, all in favor? Roll call again, please, sorry, Jay.
Jay?
Mr. Houston?
Langenheim? Maxwell? McGuire? Michaels? Mitchell? Petrie? Quisenberry? Richards? Rosales? Schwartz? Alex? Burksen? Carter? Carter? Coort? Esri? Harper? Hartke? James? Kurtz?